There we go. This is the July 15th meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission, and we will now come to order. Due to COVID-19 concerns and since most Boulder County offices are closed to the public, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting has been posted on the Planning Commission webpage at www.boco.org/pcc. There will be an opportunity to remotely provide comment, public comment, on the subject dockets during the respective virtual public hearing portions for each item. I'll provide instructions about that when we get to each docket on the agenda. So let's begin by taking roll call. Mark Bloomfield.
Present.
Sam Fitch.
Present.
Ann Goldfarb, present. Lisa Gargano, excused. Sam Libby, excused. Gavin Miller-McMillan, I'm sorry.
Present.
Melanie Niski, excused. Todd Quigley.
Present.
And Dan Hilton.
Present.
Great. Okay, so the first thing we need to do here is take a look at our minutes and see if there are any additions or corrections to the minutes for the June 17th, 2020 meeting. And if not, would someone move to approve? I think Sam is still muted. He's talking, but I can't hear him.
Sam Fitch, Commissioner, I move to approve the minutes of the...
June 17th?
June 17th meeting, thank you.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Bloomfield, I'll second.
All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, do we need to do a roll call vote on each of these?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Mark Bloomfield?
Aye.
Sam Fitch?
Aye.
Ann Goldfarb, aye. Gavin McMillan?
Aye.
Todd Quigley?
Aye.
And Dan Hilton?
Aye.
Great, minutes are approved. Next order of business is staff updates. Do we have staff updates this month?
Hi Commissioners, this is Kim Sanchez, Deputy Director of Planning and Community Planning and Permitting, and I do have a brief oil and gas update for you. I'm not sure if everyone saw the newspaper this morning, but I wanted to update you that the Board of County Commissioners last night extended the moratorium on oil and gas development and seismic testing in unincorporated Boulder County through December 31st of this year, and that is to allow staff to complete the update of the regulations under a new timeframe. So you might recall that prior to COVID, we had put together a schedule which included public review of the regulations, starting with you, the Planning Commission, in April of this year. However, due to COVID and since we couldn't hold large public hearings, large group gatherings under the COVID circumstances, and since we had key staff that were redeployed to other efforts related to our COVID response at Boulder County, we had to vacate the original schedule and have put together a new schedule. So we presented that schedule to them last night, and that schedule anticipates Planning Commission hearings beginning in mid-October, and then review by the Board of County Commissioners in November, so that we can have a completion day and a new set of updated adopted regulations by the December 31st, new revised moratorium date. So I sent you an email a week or so ago with some dates that I asked you to reserve on your calendars for the proceedings that we anticipate to have with you. If any of you cannot make those, let me know. If you can make it, no need to respond, but that is the schedule that we anticipate following moving forward. So this schedule starts your proceedings in October rather than now, because as you are also likely aware, we are very actively involved in the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission rulemakings that are occurring at the state. So in April of 2019, Senate Bill 18181 was signed into law by Governor Polis, and as a result, that requires us to update our regulations since it really changed the arena for oil and gas development regulation in the state of Colorado. So while we are simultaneously working on our local regulations, we're also actively involved in the proceedings at the state, which will strengthen and improve the rules for the entire state of Colorado. So we've submitted our first pre-hearing statement for those rulemakings, and that is available on the oil and gas website. I'll also send you a link to it after this meeting today, so you can take a look at it. And the hearings on the COGCC mission change rulemaking are August 24th through September 10th on the 200 to 600 set of rules, and then we have another set of hearings, September 29th through October 9th, on the 800, 900, and 1200 set of rules. So we'll be pretty busy participating in the state, and then once we get that process completed, we look forward to engaging with you on our local set of regulations. Do you have any questions about oil and gas at this time? All right, well, sounds like I think I had the only update, and we can move forward. I also just wanted to mention again that we thank you for your flexibility and adaptability in holding these meetings virtually. So Commissioner Fitch, it's quite all right to have technical difficulties. We know that we sometimes have glitches, and that's just the new world that we live in. So appreciate everybody's patience and your adaptability in making county business move forward in this new way that we have to adjust to. Appreciate your service.
Thanks, Kim. And Sam, you were worth waiting for. Our first docket item is the adoption of the Planning Commission Resolution 2020-03 for docket BCCP-20-0001, which is the Geological Hazard Mapping Related Amendments.
Hi, yeah, this is Chad Endicott, Staff Planner with Community Planning and Permitting. And as you mentioned, the next item on agenda is resolution for docket BCCP-20-01, Geological Hazard mapping related amendments to the comprehensive plan. And this docket was brought to the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners for comments on February 19th, 2020, and March 31st, 2020, respectively. And on May 20th, this docket was brought back to Planning Commission where proposed amendments were approved, and this proposed resolution before you today memorializes that decision and makes it official. So we are asking and recommending that you approve and adopt this resolution, and there's no public hearing associated with this item either. And so I'll just open it up for questions.
Are there any questions?
Just one procedural question. I wasn't at that meeting. Are we, the Commissioners who were not there, able to vote on it? Even if they weren't at the meeting?
I believe you are. Is that correct? Anyone on staff?
This is Kim Sanchez, and that is correct. You can vote on an item if you weren't present for it.
Okay, thanks.
Great. All right. Any other questions? Okay, would someone like to make a motion then?
I'll move that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC-2020-04. This is Commissioner McMillan, for the record.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Fitch, second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion?
Was that 04 or 03?
03.
03, yes, thank you.
I can amend my motion to the Planning Commission to adopt Resolution PC-2020-03, which is a resolution updating the geology element to the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan.
Great, thank you. Second?
Second as amended.
Commissioner Bloomfield, I'll second.
Okay. All right, let's take a roll call then. Commissioner Bloomfield?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitch?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldfarb, aye. Commissioner McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Quigley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hilton?
Aye.
Great. Motion passes unanimously. Next docket item is the addition of Planning Commission Resolution 2020-04 for docket BCCP-20-0002, BCCP Document Template Conversion Related Amendments.
Yeah, hi, good afternoon. This is Molly Marcaselli, Planner with Community Planning and Permitting, very similar to Chad. So this resolution is for docket BCCP-200002, redesign of the comp plan and related content amendments. And just to summarize, this docket was brought to Planning Commission on February 19th, and to the Board of County Commissioners on March 31st for comments. And on May 20th, this docket was brought back to Planning Commission where the proposed amendments were approved. And so this proposed resolution just memorializes that decision and makes it official. So we are recommending that you approve and adopt this resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Questions? I have one. It looks like in F, there's an indication that several minor edits were not completed, and in addition, redesigned map styles planned as current maps are updated. Will any of that be brought to us in the future, or is that just done routinely? In an ongoing basis? That's not something that comes to us?
So I don't think those updates are gonna come back to the Planning Commission. I think part of the approval was just approving and accepting that those edits would be made in the future, but our plan is, once the full document is completed, we can probably send it out to everybody.
Okay, great. Any other questions by anyone? Okay. Would someone like to make motion in regard to this docket item?
Commissioner Bloomfield, I move that the Planning Commission approve Planning Commission Resolution PC-2020-04, related to, well, approving the conversion related amendments to the document template for the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan.
Is there a second?
Commissioner McMillan, seconds.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote then. Commissioner Bloomfield?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitch? Commissioner Fitch, are you muted?
Sorry, aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldfarb, aye. Commissioner McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Quigley?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hilton?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next docket item is docket SU-20-0002, Ward Agricultural Structures Public Hearing.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Rank Serik, Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting Planner. Turn my camera off here and then share my screen for the staff presentation. So let's do... Is everybody able to... See a screen here?
Yes.
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 Cool. All right, so this is SU-20-0002, Ward Agricultural Structures at 230075th Street. We shift here to the vicinity map. We can see the outlined in red is a subject parcel. It's located northeast of the intersection of Arapaho Road and 75th Street, east of the city of Boulder, and northwest of Lafayette. Project overview here, the applicant is the owner, Jana and Thomas Ward. The zoning for this parcel is rural residential. The parcel is encumbered by a Boulder County Conservation easement as well. The parcel size is 39.58 acres. Existing conditions on the parcel are, there's 33,526 square feet of structures, of which 30,326 square feet are permitted. So that's a 19,725 square foot residence, a 900 square foot poolhouse, a 4,680 square foot farm, a 432 square foot cattle shed, open cattle shed. And then there's a couple of unpermitted structures on the parcel, a 3,200 square foot agricultural structure, it's unpermitted, an existing Quonset hut, we don't have the square footage of that, that is also unpermitted and existing on the parcel. The request today is the approval of that existing 3,200 square foot unpermitted agricultural structure, and the construction of a second identical 3,200 square foot agricultural structure, with the removal of that unpermitted existing Quonset hut located in the proposed area of the second agricultural structure. So looking at the comprehensive plan layers that are associated with this subject parcel, we can see that it has mapped ag lands of national importance, agricultural lands of national importance, for pretty much the entire parcel. We keep going here to the public lands map. We can see, colored in in green for the subject parcel, that there's Conservation easement on this parcel, just to the east of it, we can see the Willow Glen PUD Conservation easement. There's a number of Conservation easements kind of within the general area, along with other public lands, whether they be owned by the city of Boulder, and they're through their open space mountain parks program, there's some county open space, and other open space held with different groups. Here's the aerial map of the subject parcel. It accesses off of 75th Street and comes to the resident site with all the existing structures we talked about. We'll zoom further in here to look at the existing conditions of the parcel. So we can see, move my cursor here, the residence location being here, it's a 19,725 square foot residence. Here is the 900 square foot poolhouse. Here is a 4,680 square foot barn. Here is a 432 square foot cattle shed. This is the location of that Quonset hut I spoke about a couple slides ago, at the unpermitted Quonset hut. This aerial image is not, was not up to date to be able to see the unpermitted 3,200 square foot agricultural structure that has also been placed in the property. It's located just east, right next to this Quonset hut. We're here today to talk about the unpermitted agricultural structure and the proposal to add a second agricultural structure. In the fall, the applicant built without permits the 3,200 square foot unpermitted agricultural structure. This was called in, zoning enforcement case was called in from neighbors. It was opened. This is our process today, is, in response to that, this is the process to resolve the zoning case. So as they're saying, there's unpermitted agricultural structure of 3,200 square feet that's located here. The proposal is then for a second one to come in here with the removal of this Quonset hut. So here's our original site plan provided by the applicant. It asked for the approval of a 3,200 square foot agricultural structure, outlined in red, filled in with white here, and the approval of a proposed second identical agricultural structure directly west of it, right here, kind of in the area of that Quonset hut. So remove that Quonset hut from the property. The agricultural structures are proposed to be used for storage of hay in the summer months, so right now, and then for storage and drying of hemp in the remaining months, proposed to be used year-round. Following the staff recommendation posting, the applicant reached out and spoke with staff and found that the... That they would like to propose tree screening, as we can kind of see here. So still remaining, or still proposing the existing 3,200 square foot structure, and the construction of a second 3,200 square foot structure, but then also planting nine evergreen trees with 20-foot centers, kind of seen here, I've superimposed, drawing from the applicant onto this aerial to give some context, 20 feet from the existing structures, a row of trees here, 20 between the trees, this would be 10 feet kind of in between those. That is the proposed site plan from the applicant. Staff recommended a different location for the agricultural structures, we can see here. So this is what was proposed by the applicant. Staff recommended locating the structures and clustering them with the existing barn. Staff also recommended rotating the structures 90 degrees to reduce visibility of them, to basically flip them and have the broadside face, broadside of the structures face north and south versus the proposed having them east and west. This also clusters, again, clusters them with the existing barn, existing agricultural structure on the parcel. After talking with the applicant furthermore, and the tree screening idea was brought up, staff wants to provide an update here to include those tree screening to the east of the structures. Also, in a slight update from what is in the staff recommendation, moving the structures slightly north of the existing barn in order to allow for, there's paddocks that come off of to the north of the barn, doors from the north of the barn, allowing movement into the barn to occur, but still keeping the structures located and clustered near the existing barn. So we'll hop to some elevations here. This is the structure that was built, the kind of impetus for the zoning enforcement, and ultimately this discussion today. We're looking at this from the east in the upper left-hand corner. The structure is 24 feet tall, again, 3,200 square feet in size. These are going to be pictures looking from east, northeast, again, kind of from the east, slightly from the northeast, and then from the north of the structure. I'll go to the next slide, continuing to look from the north, here showing the 24 feet. On this side, looking from the northwest, here's that existing Quonset hut that we, I spoke of, that'll be removed and in place of it, there'll be a second 3,200 square foot agricultural structure. This is looking to the west of it, or looking from the west at the structure, and this is looking from the southwest of the structure. So I also included in this a couple pictures here. This is looking back, and this picture is looking back kind of at the existing barn, looking southwest towards that staff recommended location. This is a picture taken more or less from that staff recommended location, looking out, looking to the northeast. And also, staff also went out and took pictures from the surrounding area. So the picture on the left is looking from north from Arapaho Road, you can kind of see, I pointed an arrow to where the agricultural structure is located at, this being that existing barn. Furthermore, I, staff drove to the neighborhood just to the east of this proposal, drove through that neighborhood and took pictures. This picture here on the right is looking northwest roughly from Willow Creek Drive, Willow Creek Drive and Brook Hall Court intersection, it's a little bit south of that. You can see the structure kind of pointed out here. Again, arrows pointing, this is looking west from Willow Creek Drive, towards the structure, and this is looking from Foxridge Court, cul-de-sac at the structure. Staff was also asked to take pictures from 8011 Foxridge Court, these are photos taken from there. They kind of move from a pathway to get, that would be sort of on the northeast corner of the parcel here, through the backyard to the southwest corner of the parcel here, pointing towards where the agricultural structure that we looked at in the elevations is located at on the subject parcel, which is here. And these are all views looking west from the neighborhood. So we'll go to the referrals that staff received. This was referred out, the Boulder County building official provided standard comments, saying it must meet current wind and snow loads. Boulder County Planning and Permitting Engineering found that legal access has been demonstrated. The applicant will need to provide a site plan that shows emergency pullouts and emergency turnarounds that meet the multimodal transportation standards. Boulder County Parks and Open Space, a natural resource planner, reviewed the application, found that this is, has no significant natural resource impacts, and found that it's in support of the designation of having significant agricultural lands of national importance. City of Boulder Open Space and Mountain Parks has referred this. Staff member with OSMP reviewed the application and found it likely to have view shed impacts to adjacent open space in the Foxridge Court neighborhood to the east. Boulder County Parks and Open Space Conservation easement team reviewed it, found that it has no conflict with the Conservation easement that is on the parcel, received a number of no comment, no responses from other referral agencies. The public comments, the public was notified to this, were sent out to adjacent property owners. We'll talk here first about public comments received prior to the staff recommendation being posted. Staff received eight comments from adjacent property owners against the proposal, one comment in support of the proposed location, and then also received a petition stating opposition to the proposal, which was signed by 20 adjacent property owners and was provided to staff. These comments coming largely from the neighborhood directly to the east of the subject parcel. Comments in opposition, state of the structure is not compatible with the surrounding area, in particular as the structure relates to the neighborhood to the east. Found that while there's vegetation and trees along Dry Creek and Andrews Ditch, which is between the subject parcel and the neighborhood to the east, both this parcel and the neighborhood sit higher, and the vegetation does not provide natural screening. Concerns and opposition were to the color of the structure, as the neighbors see that it increases visibility, and then neighbors had requested that structures are to remain, they be located in a less visible location. Comments also raised concerns related to the total amount of square footage on the parcel being larger than 25,000 square feet, and asked about what the effects of an additional 6,400 square feet in the parcel would be. There was also concerns with drainage, impacts from the proposal, concerns about ability to meet snow and wind loads, and concerns about the overall intended use of the structures. The petition objected to the amount of square footage on the parcel, the visual impact of the structure, particularly to properties east, and demanded removal or relocation of the current agricultural structure, and denial of the second structure. Since the posting, the staff recommendation, Community Planning and Permitting staff received 14 additional comments in regards to the proposal and staff recommendation. We were able to pass many of these along to you all. We received two comments since 10:00 AM this morning. They've been integrated into the slide, but I wanted to inform you that as well. There's two additional ones that were received after 10:00 AM. I've included them here. We received eight comments requesting that agricultural structures be located in the area proposed by the applicant, so that original proposal by the applicant, along with tree screening. These eight comments objected to the staff recommendation location, due to concerns that they felt that the location of staff recommended would actually cause more visual impacts to a greater number of residents in the neighborhood to the east than that of the location proposed by the applicant. They requested the structures be rotated 90 degrees in their proposed location, in the location proposed by the applicant. Staff received one comment. Staff received one comment in support of the location, but requested the colors be changed. Received three comments against the proposal in its entirety due to the visual impact concerns, and concerns with the size of structure, and concerns with allowing square footage in excess of 25,000 square feet. One comment proposed an alternative location for the agricultural structures to be directly west of and in line with the existing barn, and then one comment requested that the roof and walls be matte, non-reflective material and muted color tone, and that natural screening such as evergreen trees be planted sufficiently, screen the structures from the view of the neighboring uses to the east and north. We'll hop to the criteria for the review here. This is 4-6012. Use will be compatible with the surrounding area. Surrounding area is comprised of single-family residential homes, farms, and other agricultural operations. This property is owned rural residential. To the east of subject parcel is Willow Glen PUD, a conservation easement. We looked at that public lands map, we could see that there. And then just past that, conservation easement is Willow Glen subdivision, which is owned rural residential, features single-family residences on one and a half to one acre lots. Properties in northwest and south consist of agriculture operations bearing sizes on large parcels similar to this one. The subject parcel has an established open agricultural use on the property. The agricultural structures are to be used to store hay in a permanent location roughly where the applicant is proposing these agricultural structures be located is where hay is currently stacked after it's cut and it's covered with a tarp in that location. The staff recommended location clusters those agricultural structures with the existing barn in order to cluster the bulk enassing of all agricultural structures on the property. Go to the next criteria, which is 4-6013. Use will be in accordance with the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. Property is designated as agricultural lands of national importance. Continuance of land uses in the Plains Planning Area related ag activities, fostering of very, varied agricultural activities and strategies to encourage diversions, sustainable agriculture, preservations of agricultural lands of national importance, protection of environmental resources and agricultural uses are all supported through the Boulder County Conservation, or Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. Agriculture, as stated in the plan, is recognized as an integral sector of the Boulder County economy. This proposal continues and supports the use of agricultural lands of national importance for open agricultural purposes. 4-6014, the use will not result in over-intensive use of land or excessive depletion of natural resources. Staff wants to note that a revegetation plan will be required to ensure that disturbance to agricultural lands is kept to a minimum after construction of the second structure. 4-6019, use will be adequately buffered or screened to mitigate any undue visual impacts of the use. The staff recommended location for the agricultural structures clusters them with the existing barn of the property to mitigate visual impact. Staff finds that rotating agricultural structures 90 degrees can decrease the visible bulk enassing to the neighbor to the east also reduces visual impact. Staff recommended location clustered with the existing barn, intended to backdrop the agricultural structures with the existing barn to mitigate views from the north, also potential views from the south, and then staff is in agreement with the applicant in requiring trees to screen agricultural structures, requiring those plantings to the east to mitigate visual impacts from those properties to the east. 4-60111, use will establish an appropriate balance between current and future economic, environmental, and societal needs by minimizing the consumption and inefficient use of energy, materials, minerals, water, land, and other finite resources. The proposed agricultural structures will be used in support of the current established agricultural operations in the parcel in an economically viable way. These agricultural structures are not resource intensive to build, are not connected to any public utilities or power. With that, community planning permit, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend conditional approval for docket SU 20-002 for agricultural structures. Subject to the conditions outlined in staff recommendation with the additional petition below, that tree plantings east of and near the agricultural structures be required to screen agricultural structures from the views from the east. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from commissioners?
This is Daniel Hilton. I have a question for staff on the conservation easement. The details of the conservation easement, does that specify a hard limit of 25,000 square feet?
Um, so the limit of 25,000 square feet is actually a trigger to requiring a special use of what we're reviewing here versus something like an SPR if the square footage limit was beneath 25,000 square feet on the property. So that's, you might be getting at that. In terms of the limitations of the conservation easement, I think actually there's somebody here from Parks and Open Space who looks at the conservation easements, and I can have them maybe give you some more information on that. I think I saw Liz, you're on this call?
Yeah, this is Conrad Lattis in the county attorney's office, and the conservation easement does not have any limitations on square footage of any kind of structures. It does not have a square footage limit.
Huh? Thank you.
What the hell are you talking about?
Excuse me, whoever is making comments right now, would you please mute yourself? It's not an appropriate time for you to be commenting.
I have a follow-up question on the conservation easement. Is it located on this property or on the property adjacent to the east or both?
The conservation easement is a, an encumbrance on this property, the property that has applied.
Okay. But it does not, as you just mentioned, limit size of structures?
It does not. It limits the types of structures, and they have to be agricultural, but it was concluded by Parks and Open Space Department that these are agricultural structures.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. In regard to the conservation easement issue, as I understand it, there's a conservation easement on property that is part of the Willow Creek PUD, is that right?
Yes, there's one to that parcel to the east of it, that parcel not being involved with this, or not being owned by the applicant or a part of this particular application.
Right.
It's a neighboring conservation easement like other ones in the area.
Okay. And just to clarify, if you could please, what's the reason for a conservation easement on that piece of property?
On the property, not the subject parcel, but the
Right, the Willow Creek property, yes.
That I'm not sure. Would indicate to me that it's a part of the, was probably a part of the NUPUD process that occurred over there. When those, when that neighborhood to the east of this parcel was planted, it was kind of, it was common within the county for, you know, the kind of subdivision and NUPUD process to lay out or conserve parts of the land that was, you know, being subdivided like that.
Thank you. Other questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Quigley. A question about the relocation and orientation that was recommended by the staff. I'd like to maybe understand, is it, is it kind of an overall from a visual standpoint to try to minimize it, or is it specifically for that, that neighborhood to the east that's trying to accommodate some of their comments?
So staff's recommended location is to mitigate for visual impacts not only to the parcel to the east, but in all subject, or any in all adjacent parcels. It also falls in line with staff's, and we, staff has practiced to try to cluster and keep structures in the same area to reduce disturbances to land, to reduce, in particular when you're in agricultural lands of national importance and agricultural lands of significance like this, to minimize kind of overall disturbance to those lands by clustering structures as much as possible, and by, and through doing that, also then achieving a combination of bulk enassing to reduce visual impacts in directions northeast, south, and west.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Can we go back to the proposed site plan with existing and proposed structures?
Sure. Let me, tell me when you see it here, I don't know if there's a lag. This one?
Yeah, the one I'm looking at, yeah, that one, that one.
Okay.
Oh, that's the original site plan, okay.
Yep.
So a couple of questions on that. So where Arctic Structure 2 is noted there in red, that's the current location of the Quonset hut, is that right?
Yes.
And we don't know the size of that, but that's going to go away, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then to the north of the Quonset hut there, there's a smaller white rectangle and then a little bit larger rectangle right above that. What are those things?
I believe those are trailers, let's look at, like horse trailers. So here's pictures just to the north of the structures, right, Quonset hut and that structure, so we'll use, look at the photo there. I think depending on the aerial, you see, yeah, like some of these, you know, the trailers moving.
All right. And then on that same original site plan there, the barn is at the lower portion of that photograph. What is to the west of the barn, the beige areas?
That is like a, what's the correct term? Horses right there.
Arena?
Of sorts, yes.
What do you mean?
With no roof or structure above it, it's, there's no structure, yeah.
Okay. And the, the area, so I assume that's what's to the far left of that picture?
Yes.
Okay. And then it looks like there's a line, and then there's a little bit lighter beige area there that extends around to the north side of the barn. What is that?
Okay, I'll try to follow you here. Is it, are you talking about, I'm going to move my cursor over it, are you talking here?
Yeah, and then down to the, down in front of the, to the west of the barn?
Here.
No, west. Yeah, go straight down now, that area. What is, what is that?
I think that's probably cleared out area for movement to in and out of the barn, movement of horses and things like that.
Okay. And similar on the very lowest part there?
Yeah.
Cleared property?
Let's go to, I think maybe, oh, sorry. I think we can get a, yeah, you can kind of see it here as it exists to the barn.
Okay. All right. And then you indicated that, I think that this property is approved for open agricultural use?
Yeah, yes, that's a use by right.
Okay. And what does that mean, open agricultural use? Is that just growing in fields?
Potentially, yeah. Open agricultural use has a number, like a, different things with it. I guess it's not just to the grab, to the grabbing, growing of crops, but certainly growing of crops is part of it. Open agricultural uses are uses that kind of include like grazing, keeping of livestock, production, harvesting, selling of agricultural products or horticultural products, storage and accessory storage involved with those, those, those activities as well. It's a by right use in the rural residential zone.
Okay. Other questions?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I just have a quick question on this original site plan. What are the two, basically to the east, on the east side below the Arctic Shelter, what are those two long things? Yes, those?
Yeah. I believe that's, actually it was hay, stacked hay covered with tarp.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. When was, when was this taken?
Oh.
Was this last fall?
That I don't know. I would have, this was provided by the applicant, so it's something that can be asked of the applicant, I think, when he speaks. I'm not entirely sure when this photo was, this aerial image was processed, came from Google, but
Okay. All right, thanks.
This is Commissioner Hilton. A question on the, the recommendation, recommended conditions of approval. So as listed in the packet, are those still the full set, unmodified, of the recommendations for approval conditions? Or has anything changed since the packet was produced?
Yeah, so those are, those remain the recommended conditions of approval, and then I'll slide here to that last slide that we had with the addition of the tree planning requirement. So that would be the kind of only new one, so to speak.
Okay, so we don't have a condition that's related to the material or color of the structures?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. To follow up on that, did staff look at the issue of the color of the structures, or was that not considered at all?
Staff certainly had discussions about that. Staff, staff discusses kind of every and all aspects of a, of a proposal. Staff found that the visual, the mitigation tactics recommended through, in the staff recommendation would mitigate visual impact, and found that, that was the conclusion that was made by staff.
So the, the mitigation is nine trees, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And those are to be evergreen trees. You said 20-foot on center, is that at maturity?
Yes, I think that's probably a good question also to ask the applicant too, for further clarification on this. This is the information that staff's received.
Okay, all right. All right, all right. So there's no, there's no condition in regard to the size of those trees at this point?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. There was, this is Commissioner Goldfarb again. You mentioned in your report something about drainage, and what was, what was that about?
So we had received a comment from the public with concerns about potential impacts to Is that what you're, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, I, you mentioned drainage. Yeah, I, you mentioned drainage and then drainage was also mentioned by one of the adjacent property owners as being an issue. And so I'm just wondering whether that was something that was considered when staff was making these recommendations?
Okay, sure, yes. So we had received that comment. It also, just as we review this, this application was referred out to our, the Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting Development Review Team Engineering Group. They looked at this, they looked to see how applications potentially can impact drainage that's on a parcel. We have requirements if you're within 100 feet of a waterway that certain drainage, like a stormwater quality permits and things like that may be needed. This application is not within that. It's, it's further away from the ditch and nearest waterways. There was no requirement coming from or comment or concern raised by the engineering group who looks at drainage in regards to this. So the inclusion and mention of it in my presentation today was just to make sure that that public comment was provided here. But as I'm talking, saying here now, the engineering group found that there, nothing was, further was needed with any drainage impact concerns from this proposal.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. So that if there was a preexisting drainage issue on the property, which is, I guess what, it sounded to me like the adjacent property owners were talking about with there being mosquitoes and some standing water that I think is on the conservation easement property there. This application wouldn't look into that at all, is that correct?
I get, well, so this application did look into how, what is being proposed, if it may have any impacts to drainage. It was found that it, you know, what's being proposed wouldn't or isn't likely to have any impacts to historic drainage patterns in the, in the area. So that's why that wasn't included in the engineering referral. I don't, we don't have anything in the recommended conditions of approval with it either.
Okay. So preexisting drainage, drainage conditions and concerns would not impact this application?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Commissioner Fitch. I had, that's the same question, but I think again, that's a, a separate dispute between the property owners that is not really part of this particular proposal. There may be a problem there, but that's not part of what we're being asked to decide.
Right, that's, that's what I'm understanding from staff, yeah.
Correct.
All right, further questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I invite the applicant to make a presentation if he would like. Tom Ward?
Hi. Can you see me? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. My name is Tom Ward. I'll see if I can pull this presentation up. Here we go. So my name is Tom Ward and I own the farm along with my wife, Jan Ward, that we're talking about today at 2,375th Street. My wife can't be here today. She's taking a horse up to CSU for surgery as we speak. Little bit on my background, I have lived in Boulder County now for 46 years. I've owned this farm for 25 years and lived on it for 20. We've been farming it that whole time and it'd been historically farmed really since the 50s. So it's been a farm for a long time. The way my presentation is going to work is I'm going to talk about issues, talk about how we got here, I guess, why, why I'm asking for this building or these buildings, how we got here. I'd like to address several of the comments that were made by the, by the neighbors. And then I've got several pictures to kind of help explain what we're thinking about here. So the, the history, and if you remember back to that slide that you saw Ryan showed earlier and there was a question about it where there were the two large stacks of hay, that year was two years ago, I think two years ago when that, and Google Pro still shows that same photo, so that's why we keep using it. But since we've moved in here 20 years ago, I guess now, we've, we've had complaints from neighbors from the very first week. It's, it's just that type of relationship, I guess. There's been lots of complaints. But anyway, a couple of years ago, we got a complaint or a couple of complaints about those stacks of hay. And so I didn't think too much about it because they're typically gone, you know, I'll say by October, November. And, but then the next year, which was a year ago, I guess, I got thinking about it and I thought, well, you know, we ought to let, you know, try to be a good neighbor. And so I went to the planning commission there downtown off of Spruce Street and met with a planner and this would have been in May. And I said, you know, what I'd like to do is I'd like to put up a pole barn that has a metal roof, metal sides for storing hay. It's going to have to be at least 16, I'd like 18 feet of clearance on the inside and, and you know, that's, that's what I'd like to do. And she was looking at the screen and very, very helpful, very nice. And, and she said, well, Tom, when do you want to start building this? And I said, well, I wanted to go, I want to go now, I want to start this week. They're very straightforward, simple to build. And because we're going to start cutting hay in early June. And she kind of smiled and said, well, at least at that time, she said, the way it works is I'll put your name on a list and then in October we'll call you to have a meeting to schedule a meeting. And, and I said, well, that's clearly not going to work for, from a timing standpoint. And, and so I said, okay, thanks. And then as I was getting ready to leave, she, she made kind of an offhanded comment, I'll say, that, you know, you can always build a temporary structure. And I said, oh, okay. And didn't think too much about it. But anyway, so that's how we got there. And then, and then I was concerned that I wouldn't be able to find one big enough or I wouldn't be able to get one that could handle the, the wind and the snow. And finally found one in, in, in Canada. And, and that's, that's how I moved ahead and put up this building. There were complaints right away and, and I had contact with, with someone from the planning office. And, and as late as, as late as the middle of September, I guess, there was still some question about whether I, in fact, there was an email that said I did not need a building permit. So I didn't worry too much about it. And then in October, there was a change where they said, no, because, because the height and I think just because of the height, then you're probably going to need a building permit. And so all of that is just to tell you that I wasn't trying to skirt the system. I really believed that I could do what I wanted to do. As Ryan said, the building has two main uses. One is through the, you know, from, I'll say June through September, it's for the storage of hay to avoid the, the big stacks really that you saw sitting there in the, in the one photo. It's, it's, I'll say it's visual in my eye, and I understand these are big white buildings and I, and I see what everybody else sees. But I do know there was complaints about the haystacks as well. And so this would take, take those stacks away. And, you know, the benefit to me is that they're stored in a better environment than they are even out under the tarps. And the, and the hay is stored in that same general area that, that the buildings are being proposed. And then from October to March is when we would hang hemp and, and hang it in there for it to dry. And then after it dries, while, while it's drying, it's being stored. And so that's really the uses. This photo here is showing, similar to what you've seen. And, and really, what, what I, I've spent a lot of time, obviously, well, I spend a lot of time outdoors and spent a lot of time thinking about this. And I think that the location as proposed here in this photograph will meet most people's requirements better than the, the proposal from, from county staff. And so what I'm proposing is if you look to the left of the driveway there, you'll see those trees and that's about 100, about 100 foot of spacing. The spacing on those trees is between 21 and 25 feet. And then there's a second tier to the east of them or to the left on this picture. And, and they're again spaced in the 20 to 25 foot spacing staggered. And, and then you'll see a picture here in a little bit that will show that. Now, these, these trees were put in at the behest of the, of the planning commission, I guess, and the, and the county commissioners when we built the house. And from other photos, you'll see that we've pretty much surrounded the house and tried to, to block everything from, you know, from being seen. But this, what will happen, and of course, the trees will maximize the height that we can put in there, and I don't know what that is. I've been talking to my gardener about it. We have water plumbed to go out to this. And so, so you see the two structures I'm talking about in white with the current Quonset hut sitting there. And then those blue dots are the proposed trees. And, and, and when they start out, they're of course not as big as the ones you see there on the left side, but it does take a while for trees to grow. But that would be my intent to match what you see there rather than try something different. And from a visual clustering standpoint, especially from the east, the neighborhood that we're talking about, what, what they see and you saw in their photographs is there is a big mass that they're looking at when they look towards our house. And most of that mass is made up of trees because it's shading. And so this, these buildings kind of fit into, you know, or a cluster into that mass. Where if we talk about the new location being closer to the barn, from this picture, and I don't have a clear sight of it, but you could basically say from where the, where the driveway there on the east side of that driveway comes down, if you were to straighten it out, what, you know, what's being proposed would be almost to the bottom of this picture would be the far west end of the buildings and then they would stretch to, towards the east. And so it'd all, it'd be almost like taking those two big haystacks and rotating them 90 degrees. And that's what the visual impact and the, and the clustering in my mind would be as, as we talk about the staff's proposal and versus what I'm proposing. So I'll just leave that there. So these are the, the concerns and there were several, obviously several pieces of feedback from the, from the initial proposal or presentation. And so I'd just like to address, you know, some of them as we, as we kind of go through it. You know, the no communication with neighbors, it, there hasn't been any, I'd say, any contentious issues over the last 25 years, but there have been multiple complaints and some of them, I would argue, are, are, you know, very, very minor. I'll say there's been nothing major like this, but people just complaining. You know, some of the, some of the, they complained about the stacks of hay, which when you're in the hay business, you got to do something with it, you stack it. They, they complained when I was plowing a field and they said that I was excavating. So it's those types of things. So when we get the complaints, we just kind of ignore them is the best way to say it. And, and, and we've had them kind of forever. From the statement that we're in violation of, of the county land use, you know, from, from my standpoint, obviously, my response is my standpoint, you know, Boulder County, and it's one of the reasons that we live here, all of us, is the, you know, the commitment to open space, the commitment to conservation easements and the commitment to agriculture on both of those properties. And along with that, you need to have a financially viable business to do that. And, and so in this case, you know, these buildings really are just tools and no, no different than a tractor or a plow, but it's a, it's a tool that's required to keep these kinds of products, financial, you know, these crops financially viable. You know, from a square footage standpoint, we grow a lot of hay and we grow a lot of hemp and it, and it takes, it takes space to store that stuff. And from a height standpoint, I'll show you a couple of pictures, but you know, the, the haystacks are typically in the 13 feet high range. It's all by machine, but the haze are, you know, 13 feet high. And then to stack them, you need clearance of another three or four feet. And so then you get up into that 16, 17 feet of clearance. And then in terms of, you know, violating the conservation easement, you know, it's, it is for ag use and that's why we bought it. We bought it to farm it. And, and we take that very seriously and we take conservation of the, of the, of the land very seriously. There was a statement made that basically I lied, that I falsely stated that the property screened by trees. And if you looked at my application, what I did say is that I've placed the Arctic Shelter in line with trees that are taller than the structure so it doesn't impact my neighbors' views. Now, I probably could have said that a little better in that now their view includes a big white building, but in terms of their views of the mountains, we did not impact the views of the mountains. And there'll be some pictures that'll show that. You know, the blinding glare in the morning, it is, these are big white structures and, and I tried, they, they, I'll just say, they only come in one color and that color is white because of the, the ability to require or to withstand the, the snow and the wind and the type of construction it is, this is the material that's made to, to deal with that. And, you know, do I wish it was a different color? Yes, but, but they are white. And, and so that's kind of where they, they come into. And so, you know, my proposal is to put trees there to minimize the glare, to block it. And, and yet still, you know, I really want to have these buildings, I guess. The location blocks, the mountain views, I already addressed that and we'll talk about it here in a minute with a picture. I talked about why I constructed it without a site plan review because I was somewhat, I'll say I was led to believe it was okay. Obviously, that's not the case. In the land use code where it talks about impacts on views, you know, from, from reading the staff report, there's the section where they went through the special review and for a property like this, they came up with a very detailed set of questions that then the staff has to, or the staff answers to themselves basically and to, and to you, the commissioners. And, and basically, this, this passes all of those questions. And, and number nine in particular talks about the ability to use a screen to limit the impact on the views. And so as, as I read through that and think in terms of screen versus moving the, moving the buildings, and if, if the conclusion is we move the buildings, I guess that's the conclusion. But I think that the impact on, on other neighbors than just the ones that responded is probably greater. And, and, and one of the things that I do know has been a discussion is the visuals from 75th just of our house because that's why the county had us put up all the trees surrounding our house. And basically where the new location is going to be, it's kind of out in the open. And it is what it is, right? But anyway, paragraph nine does allow for screening, not just for moving. Fire truck access, I have a photograph that shows that, but I'll just make the statement that we had to put in a, a road for the fire trucks for the pool house when the house was originally built back in, in 90, finished in 99. And that also was good for the barn, so I imagine it's going to be good for this structure as well. Hemp seeds blowing into the pasture. One of the interesting things about growing hemp is the CBD only comes from female plants and they cannot have been pollinated. And so there, there are no seeds in hemp. They're all feminine, but they're, they're not, they don't create seed, there's just no seeds at all. Someone said it was going to be an indoor Someone said it was going to be an indoor writing arena. I'll just make the statement that no, it's not an writing arena. It's too small to be a writing arena, in fact. Both of them, the two of them combined would probably be too small to be a writing arena. And that it's not open agricultural use. And at least as I understand it, open agricultural use includes the storage of the products that are grown and harvested. So this is what it looks like when it's filled with hemp. And you see that for every hemp plant requires about a square foot to hang and about four feet in length. And so the building was stuffed, I guess is the best way to say it. And the situation we're in now is I grow about seven acres of hemp. And in that, that fills this building. And I'd like to double that to 14 acres, and that would be another building that would be stuffed with hemp just like that. So you see the height is required as well as the square footage. And this is what it looks like right now with hay in it. And the first cutting, we end up selling pretty quickly. A lot of it just gets sold right out of the field, basically. But the way you can do it, of course, is you can put in multiple, put in three stacks, as you see, all the way out towards the front of the building. But here you see that a stack is about 13 feet high. And when you're stacking it, you swing up into that 16 to 18 foot range. These are the trees that you saw from that aerial photo, if you would, just to the west of the building. And this is what I would propose, or what I am proposing, planting to the east side of these new buildings. And these are on, like I said, 21 to 25 foot centers as you look across there. And then behind them is the same thing, another row. And what we would do is we would, you know, commit to buying and planting. Russ and I, Russ is our gardener, installing the largest trees that are viable for transplanting like that. And I don't know what that is. He did make the statement that they probably couldn't be moved in until, not November, until the fall. And so it's just, when you're planting trees, that's kind of the way you do it. We do have water available out there for drip irrigation for all the trees. And so we know how to keep the trees alive, and we'll do that. And obviously, if one didn't make it, we'd replace it. And this is a drawing that shows the same trees, if you will. So you could think of this Arctic shelter as Arctic Shelter One that you were looking at in the photographs. And then these are the trees, basically in the same configuration as the trees that you're looking at here. Now, these trees have been maturing, but that's the goal. This is a photo that was sent from one of the respondents. And there's really, I guess, three things that are kind of notable here. One is, you see on the bottom one, which is the after photo, where I've pointed the arrows, you can see the tops of the trees. And those trees are the ones that we were just looking at that are just right to the west of it. And so you can see that the trees are actually taller than the building itself. And so if you took that building away, you'd just be looking at a wall of green trees. So there's no, I'll say, mountain view impact. And then the other thing is, for the second building, what I'm proposing is it would be right on the other side of this building that you're looking at. And so basically, the building would be hidden, tucked behind this building, and then on the other side of it would be the trees that we were looking at earlier. And then I'll just say that from my standpoint, this photo is a little disingenuous. You see my two circles there on the top and the bottom. And so what you see is the before photo was taken angled much more to the north and not actually looking at our property. You don't see the horse trailers, for example. And then, of course, when they took our building, they shifted it to the south. And so it's really not a before and after picture. It's kind of unrelated pictures, if you will. They're not looking at the same scene, so I'll just make that point. So this is, this one is just to demonstrate where the fire road is. And what you would see, and I don't know if you guys see my pointer, but when we put in the house, the driveway is very substantial and built to, I'll say, highway grade. But right in here, there's a turnout so that, for the fire trucks, so vehicles can pass each other going each direction. And then here, we put in a dirt road, then it's identified. That circles around like this, and that's built for fire trucks. And so that's how we were, and we built that for the pool house. And then, of course, it would work for the barn as well. And then, so that's it. So that's the, you know, that's pretty much my presentation, I guess. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Does anyone have any questions? I've got a couple.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. You indicated when you actually spoke to the Planning Commissioners that you were looking at putting in a pole barn?
Yes.
When I think of a pole barn, I don't think of a structure like this.
That's correct. Because the message was the pole barn would require a building permit, and this would not require a building permit. A temporary building was okay.
And the trees that you've put in, those, the ones that you were referring to by the pool house and around the house, those were, yeah. So the picture you put up now, what's the building behind those trees?
That's the pool house.
Okay. And those trees were put in when you built the property?
Correct.
Which was when?
20 years ago.
Okay, I don't have any more questions at this point of the applicant, I don't think. Just other questions from anyone else?
I have a question. This is Commissioner Hilton for the applicant. I believe that you said that you thought there would be potentially more visual impact if you were to implement staff's proposal that's shown in figure two, where there's two buildings that are in an east-west orientation. Can you talk a little bit more about why you believe there's more visual impact there? Because it seems to me, you know, there's less area that from an eastern point of view, you would be seeing less because the two barns would be essentially, you know, one would be behind the other. Why do you say that there would be potentially more visual impact in that configuration?
Well, do you see the current slide I have up? It's kind of an aerial of the property?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So the view corridor, right from the neighborhood to the east of us, the view corridor, when they look, is they see the pastures to the north that you see that are kind of gray there before the green grass. They see those pastures, and then they see basically a mass of trees surrounding the pool house. And then the view corridor comes from the southern tree there next to the driveway between the Arctic shelters and the pool house. So the view corridor, in this case, was in fact blocked by the two big piles of hay. So they really have a view corridor that goes between those trees and the barn. And then, of course, they look south of the barn, and they see the barn, and they see the pool house. But that's really the kind of the view corridor. And so it's not that everybody is just looking exactly east because if they look exactly east, they're just looking at our house. And so I think what will happen is the, and nobody, I'll say nobody. Most people don't live exactly east of the building anyway. So if they're off north or south either way, they're going to see an angle of the building. And so they're going to see the sides. And the farther to the north they are, the more of the side they're going to see. And the farther to the south, the more of the side they're going to see. And so the idea really is that if you were just to think and rotate those two haystacks because they're going to be similar in size to these buildings, that they would run basically from, you know, like I said, the straightaway of that driveway, that would be the west end, and then they would protrude out to the east. And, you know, some neighbors will see more, some neighbors will see less. But at least from my standpoint, I think that, you know, they have the potential to see not only the 40 feet in width, but 160 feet in length of white. Where, you know, what I'm trying to do here, I'm trying to, you know, I mean, I see the same big white structures everyone does. I won't say they're the most attractive things, but they are the tool that I need. So, you know, for at least tucking them in together, you'll only see, if you're due east, you'll only see a maximum of 80 feet. And I'll shelter that with trees. And then if you're angled north or south, then you'll only see the 80 that's on the east or some portion of the 80 that's on the north or on the south. And so there's a lot less building exposed, I guess is the best way to say it. If that answers your question.
Yes, thanks.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. I have another question. What are the dimensions of your barn?
I think it's, let me see. I think it's about 115 and 120 feet by 36.
So these structures then are larger than your barn?
Individually, they're smaller. They're 40 by 80. The barn itself is about 4,200 square feet.
Okay, so the 40 by 160 is the two together?
No.
What's that?
The 45 60 is the barn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, no. So the barn you just said is 115 to 120 by 36?
I was just winging it there, but I think Ryan had in the presentation that it was, and I have that here.
I can hop in here just to read out what the barn is listed as. The barn is listed as 4,680 square, 4,680 square feet.
That's fine, but I want the dimensions, the length and the width.
So it's approximately 130 by 36.
Okay. And so was there something that was 40 by 160, or did I miss something?
No, I said that if you rotate them and put them end to end, then they'll be about 160 feet long plus space in between them. So that's what I was just pointing out there.
Got it, okay. All right, so, yeah, okay, thank you. This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. Is the Quonset hut still there?
It is, yes.
And when will that be removed?
I'll say whenever you want it to be removed.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Quigley. Question for the applicant of, with the staff's recommended location, as far as use for your agriculture needs, is there any difficulty with that new proposed location from that standpoint?
Well, there's a few issues. And the staff has moved it, and I haven't gone out and remeasured, but access into the buildings is critical. And what we take in there are big trucks, some really long trailers. And so you need plenty of room in front. And so from the standpoint of it being, of moving east to west, right now, it's probably pretty close from a western standpoint to the limit as to how far west it can be because we have to be able to get trucks in there, and you have to be able to turn trucks around and things like that. On the outside of the building, you have to be able to turn them around and back them in. And one of the requirements, of course, with the, from the fire department is they have to have room to turn theirs around as well. The other issue is in between the two buildings, I think they've located them about 30 feet apart, which effectively you can't get into either one of the buildings from in between the buildings. So you've cut off 50% of the access into the buildings. And then on the east end, at least where the trees are proposed now, they're so close, again, we can't get trucks in there. And so the only method of using the buildings would be to back into the far west building, back all the way through it, through the opening, and then back into the east building. And that's very inefficient and almost impractical because you've got stuff in the buildings, right? And so I assumed that that's the kind of thing that we'd still be able to talk about. But yeah, the access to the buildings are severely limited with this new location. Where, as you see from the locations of the two buildings as proposed, we can get into both ends quite easily. You just, you know, you see the traffic, in fact, in this photo. You can see traffic pattern of the equipment that's hauling the hay around.
Yeah, thank you. That helps, appreciate it.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. Ryan, can you put up the picture that shows the staff's recommendation as to where the staff is recommending the building should be and the trees that would be planted?
Yeah, I will share my screen here. Give me just a sec. We're able to see my screen here?
Any further questions for the applicant at this point? If not, we'll go to the public comment section. So we have a number of people who have signed up to speak. So any members of the public will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up from the Planning Commission homepage beforehand. Once those signed up in advance have spoken, I'll call for any additional members of the public who wish to speak. If you joined by computer, you can sign up by submitting your first name, last name, address, and the docket number in the chat box to the right. If you dialed into the meeting via phone, unmute yourself with a star six, state your desire to speak. We will then add your name to the list in the chat box and proceed in that order. When it's your turn to speak, please unmute yourself by clicking the microphone button at the bottom of the Teams bar. When it's your turn to speak, please unmute yourself by clicking the microphone button at the bottom of the Teams bar, or if on the phone, push star six, and then state your name and address for the record. A timing system has been established, and a timer will beep at the end of your speaking time. Those wishing to speak can pool time at three minutes per person for a maximum of ten minutes. You'll need to provide the names and addresses of the other people, up to three others, besides yourself, who are in attendance and donating their time to you. Anyone who is pooling time will need to attend the virtual hearing so we can verify their presence as we would at an in-person meeting. Please do not submit comments or questions in the chat box during the meeting. The chat box should be used for the public hearing speaker sign up only. Please remain on mute when possible. The moderators will mute you if we see that your connection is the source of the background noise. Members of the public will be unable to share their screens during public comment. Applicants, please have your presentation pulled up. We already did that, okay. So this is the public hearing. And we'll now go ahead and call for public testimony. We'll go through the people who signed up in advance first. So the first person we have signed up is Gail Udall. Is Gail here?
Thank you, I am here.
And we have, each individual has three minutes unless you're pooling time, as I mentioned earlier.
Thank you, now three minutes. My husband and I oppose the installation of the two structures, the existing and the proposed new. First of all, as noted on page two and three of staff's recommendation, these two structures do not meet the definition of a seize because they do not extend the growing season. The staff also notes the allowable square footage of twenty-five thousand square feet is already exceeded without the addition of these two structures. The letter from the city of Boulder Mountain Parks and Open Space and Mountain Parks notes there are likely to be impacts to the public's view shed from the adjacent open space in Fox Ridge Court. They go to encourage designs, go on to encourage designs and landscaping to minimize impacts to the view shed. Additionally, they note these structures are more in line with accessory agricultural structures, not season extending structures, because there is no growing taking place in the structures. They encourage the county to clarify the proposed uses and permitted square footage. We support these comments by staff and the agencies. And we note that more than half of the Willow Glen homeowners oppose these structures as shown by the signatures on the petition. The bottom line is no one in Willow Glen subdivision wants to view these eyesores or blights on the landscape and the agricultural lands. The white with a red stripe shows no respect for neighbors' views nor for the environment. Additionally, you know, we question temporary facility, temporary buildings, PVC coating. When is that going to deteriorate? The wind will shred that in the boulder climate in no time at all, and it will end up in our horse pasture. We believe that these should not exist because they violate at least three aspects of your rules. Other concerns that we noted in our letter, which were not addressed in the recommendations, but have been touched on here, are the fact that I heard you say that this is not the venue for addressing the runoff. There, I'm not concerned about the runoff from the addition of two structures. I am complaining about the runoff that currently has come for probably the last seven years from this property. It is piped through a pipe that is on the order of twelve to fourteen inches diameter. It comes through the west fence line of our pasture. It floods into the pasture. I included in my letter photos showing the erosion that has happened. You can see even when there's snow on the ground and in the summer. It gets full of mosquitoes, because when the horses walk through it, it makes hoof prints that create little pools that mosquitoes greet in. And the homeowner association had talked awards about this years ago. There's been no effort to make any improvements to it. And in 2013, when we had the flood, it caused the Andrews ditch walls to break and go into Dry Creek, and then Dry Creek overflowed downstream to the north. And something needs to be done about that. I mean, I don't see that this shows goodwill on the part of the property owners in looking after what they're doing to the land. See, the end of my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kay, Kate Kaiser, Kaiser. I'm not sure of the pronunciation, Kate, are you with us?
I am. It's Kaiser.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So my name is Kate Kaiser. I'm an attorney at Packer Deer King, and I represent Brandon and Kristen Fields. I submitted a letter to the Planning Commission yesterday on behalf of my clients, and would like to offer additional comment today. First, to the extent that relocating the existing structure or complying with any of the conditions in staff's recommendation presents a hardship for the applicants, we feel it's important to state on the record that the structure was built without approval from any county process. Had the applicant pursued proper channels and waited to build until after proper approvals were granted, there would have been nothing to relocate. We request that the commission not consider hardships of relocation or compliance with other conditions, given the build-first, ask-later approach the applicants chose to pursue. It also appears from the images presented in the staff recommendation that the staff proposed location would have more visual impact to the applicant's property, while the applicant's preferred location does appear to be screened from their other improvements. And second, while we appreciate staff's careful review of the land use code with respect to these structures, we respectfully and strongly disagree with the conclusion that the locations proposed by staff or applicants adequately satisfy sections six oh one eight-two and six oh one eight-nine of Article Four of the Land Use Code. The commission is expressly authorized by the code to consider the impact of the height and size of the structures on scenic vistas and nearby neighborhoods, and to require screening and buffering to mitigate undue visual impacts. The staff recommended conditions do not go far enough to protect these neighboring uses. And I want to draw your attention to a couple of items. The structures are so tall that they will impact views from Willow Glen residences and community common areas. The structures are bright white and covered in a shiny reflective material, and any natural screening would take decades to reach a height sufficient to screen the unsightly structures. My clients and many of their neighbors have submitted photographs demonstrating how unsightly these structures are and the impact they have on their views. Their letters describe the glare from the structures during the day and the lantern effect created at night. They worry about the impact these unsightly buildings will have on their property values. These adverse effects are well documented in the public record. Conversely, the applicants have not demonstrated whether use can't be accomplished with buildings or locations that would have a lesser impact on neighbors. The applicant's proposed use hanging hemp to dry could be accomplished with additional shorter buildings that would not have the same impact on the view shed. The applicants have nearly forty acres on which to locate these structures. There are plenty of options outside of the view shed of the eastern residential neighbors where these buildings could be located. Placing the structures on the western side of and in line with the existing barn, as shown in the staff memo, for example, would better screen the structures from view. And in addition to relocating the structures out of the view shed, the applicant should be required to choose structures that are non-reflective and will blend into the natural surroundings, and provide natural screening to further mitigate the unsightliness of the structures in the agricultural landscape. We respectfully request that the commission consider an alternative location and further conditions to approval to protect the neighboring residential uses from these adverse impacts. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Hirth. Are you with us, Robert?
I am, thank you.
Could you please state your name and address for the record? I'm sorry, I didn't request that earlier.
Sure, it's Bob Hirth, H R T H. I live at eight oh one two Fox Ridge Court. And I listen to Mr. Ward. I actually do live directly west of this structure. I probably, my home is probably physically the closest to the structure. And as I put in my written comments, my problems with it is that it has a severely negative impact on my view. It in fact dominates my view, and that's for a couple of reasons. One is, is the location. The pictures, the aerials don't quite make this clear, but it is situated right past our pasture fence, the HOA pasture fence. And it is in this, on top of the hill. So for neighbors like me, it's the dominant thing we see when we look at. It's the size, of course, eighty feet long, two stories high. And again, from my view, it is, because it runs north to south, I get the full benefit of all eighty feet of this white glaring structure staring at me. It's the color. You've seen some of the pictures, particularly the pictures that my neighbors have submitted. It's hard to believe that if your goal, and I'm not saying this was Mr. Ward's goal, I heard his testimony or his statement. But if one's goal was to make this stand out as much as humanly possible, to have it blend into the scenery as minimally as possible, you couldn't do much better than this huge thing. I mean, I refer to it as an eyesore in, in my comments. One of my neighbors, I think aptly referred to it as looking like a pandemic emergency, emergency medical tent. Bright white, you can see forever with these bright, bold red stripes at the end. There's a couple of things that came up earlier. Yes, there used to be hay stored roughly close where this, this structure is now. Maybe someone complained, I don't know why. It's a farm. I looked out at it all the time. It's hay, or it's hay covered by tart. That blends into the scenery. And if you look at some of these pictures, I also see the large horse farm, I see the larger residence. It's not just that they're further west and further from my property. It's that they're dark, they're dark brown, they blend into the landscape, they don't interfere with the view. The house has twenty years of tree growth. We're not going to have twenty years of tree growth to block this thing. And I don't know what the issues are with the color, but if it's permitted, there has to be a condition that the color be muted. It shouldn't be something that is such an eyesore. It's hard to believe you can't have a dark brown or something that fits into the landscape. There was not much discussion by the staff of the second structure. What I want to say about that is, if you're at a one particular location somewhere in our neighborhood, it's probably true that one structure may hide the other structure. But it's a matter of angles. If I move to a different location or one of my neighbors, it's inconceivable that the second structure will be hidden. And for that matter, given the impact, the visual impact on the neighborhood, I don't know how you justify two structures. It's one thing to have an eighty-foot structure two stories high, but to add yet another structure to increase the visual impact, the negative impact, I don't think makes much sense. I want to turn to the appropriate condition. And, and as I say.
Thank you. Next, we have John Bishop.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Could you please state your name and address for the record before you begin?
Yes, well, thank you for taking my call. My name is John Bishop, and we live at seventy-nine eighty-three Stagebrush Court in Willow Glen. And we were made aware of this week of the ongoing discussions between members of our community and the work property to the west. And our property resides on the southwest end of Willow Glen. And we have unobstructed views of the ward's house as well as their barn. So Tom spoke earlier of this as the view corridor. I would say that's probably where we, we stand. The staff's proposal of moving the structures to the south next to their barn would put that permanently in our view corridor. And that is why we would oppose this proposal, as it would cause the same issue for us as it's currently doing for our neighbors. We don't feel this is a solution, but rather causes another problem. If the goal is to mitigate the amount of displaced view due to the height, color, and size of the structures, we feel that screening them with the trees does seem to be the best solution. I had the pleasure of speaking with Jenna Ward today as she visited our property to see the view from our house. And she discussed leaving the structures where they were and bringing in trees to help screen them. And I believe that if these structures are to remain on the property, again, we feel this is the best solution, and we support Tom Ward's proposal of maintaining that structure and then using trees as a screening solution. And that's all we have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And were you pooling time with Jessica Bishop?
Uh, I can, yes.
Well, no, no, no. I, I, what I'm asking is, were you speaking on behalf of her? Or does she want to speak separately?
I, I don't have too much further to say, just that I believe that.
Let me, let me go to the next person in line then. Let me go to the next person in line. So we have David Corson next.
Hello there. Yes, David Corson is my husband. I'm Lee Corson. And he is unavailable today, so I will be pooling time with him.
Okay. Did you sign up?
I did, yes.
He needs to be present in order for you to use his time?
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, I don't need his time. I'll just, I can just wait for my time in line.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, now we're to Jessica Bishop. Did you want to speak any, say anything further than what your husband said?
Um, no, I don't. I just wanted to further say that I think shielding the trees is the best support for that decision in terms of creating a compromise.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have Brandon Fields, and Kristen Fields is pooling time with Brandon. Kristen, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Brandon Fields. My wife, Kristen, and I live at eight oh one one Fox Ridge Court in Boulder. We purchased our home, our current home, in 2014. Previously, we owned two other homes and lived in the city of Boulder. Among the main reasons for our selection of our home was the direct west views we have toward the mountains from our house and our yard, and that there was a conservation easement which would prohibit development to the west. We are the last home at the bottom of our cul-de-sac facing directly west to our neighborhood horse pasture and uphill to the conservation easement property of the wards. In September 2019, we saw workers beginning to construct some type of multi-story metal structure directly opposite our property. We were alarmed, as any of you would be, if someone began constructing a thirty-two-hundred-square-foot white and red tent opposite your backyard. We immediately wrote to the wards in a letter who we did not know and told them that perhaps they weren't aware they were directly blocking our views, and asked them to relocate whatever they were constructing. We were not given any notice by them or the county, so we contacted the county to see if in fact the construction was permitted. We were told by the county zoning officer that she had called the wards several times, and they would not return her calls. We never received a response from the wards to our letter, and they in fact completed construction before finally calling back the county zoning officer. One of our neighbors with our agreement then contacted the wards by phone and asked them to come to our house and their house to see the impact of this structure. They declined to come, saying they wouldn't come because I'm an attorney. For the record, I'm an elder law attorney. I work with seniors and disabled in our community, and I have nothing to do with land use law, and it's not my field of expertise. On October eleventh, the county issued a notice of violation indicating the structure should not have been constructed without prior consent from the county. The height of the structure exceeded the permitted height of twelve feet, and the property owners had already succeeded, exceeded the maximum construction on the conservation easement of twenty-five thousand square feet, and in fact, we're already well over thirty thousand square feet. We hired an attorney to help protect our rights as neighboring property owners. We wrote to the commissioners and asked for the structure to be taken down pending the process. It was not taken down, and instead, for ten months, this ugly structure has taken up more than a third of our view to the west. It has reduced our enjoyment of our home, our deck, and our yard. The glare off the white PVC is so strong in the morning, we can no longer sit out on our deck and look to the west from our house. With our morning coffee, as has always been our practice. With our morning coffee, as has always been our practice. We have included in our letter and the public records before and after pictures from various points, both outside, on our deck, and from our yard. I believe that Mr. Ward, not having come here, is not in a position to represent the impact on our views. We reviewed the application submitted in April of 2020. The narrative states that Mr. Ward attached two photos to show he had, quote, "placed the Arctic structure in line with trees that are taller than the structure, so it doesn't impact my neighbors' views." In contrast to what Mr. Ward said here, that's a blatantly false statement. It was false when he made it. It remains a false statement today. We, having no communication from Mr. Ward, we, eight of our neighbors, including us, submitted detailed letters to the commission. Twenty of our neighbors signed a petition objecting to the proposed structure. We reviewed the staff letter. We appreciate that the staff has recognized that the current location is inappropriate. As it states on page three, "Staff finds the proposed location of agricultural structures do not comply with the special use criteria and recommends a revised location to mitigate potential visual impacts of the agricultural structures." We also know that because the structures are twenty-four feet high, any natural screening is unlikely to work or to take years to be effective. And I I must say, for my wife and myself, we are startled that Mr. Ward writes us off as neighbors, just saying that they get so many complaints, they don't bother responding. I I would never treat a neighbor that way, and I'm amazed that he would state that publicly. Now, from our perspective, the proposed alternative and our conversations with neighbors, the proposed alternative by the staff will also be in the views of many in our community and is therefore not an acceptable solution. However, it is not the only solution. We appreciate that Mr. Ward may want to now engage in a business venture to grow hemp for CBD. The value and desirability of our homes, our enjoyment of our homes, and our neighbor and our neighbors are also all likely affected adversely by this. However, we cannot relocate our homes. The wards have a forty-acre property. They can easily provide other locations for what are effectively just storage tents and still conduct their business venture without ruining our neighborhood views to the mountains. We respectfully request that the commissioners either turn down this application or require a new location to the west on the easement property that does not impact the views of any of the homeowners to the east in our Willow Glen subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, is this Lee Corson? That we have next, or I have, I've written down Lee Carter. Is that incorrect, or is there a Lee?
Oh, yes, that, yes, I'm here. That's my maiden name, Lee Carter Corson.
Okay, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Lee Corson, and my husband, David Corson, and I live at seven nine seven three Sagebrush Court in the Willow Glen neighborhood to the east of the ward's proposed agricultural structure.
You can go ahead with your statement.
Okay, thank you. We believe the current existing site of the location of the structure was thoughtfully chosen by the wards. The current location provides the benefit to the applicant, the wards, of having a structure in a location desirable for their agricultural and farming needs, as well as provide providing for the least minimal view impact to the surrounding open space and neighbors. The current existing location of the structure is exactly where the previous agriculture buildings and the hay has been stored for over twenty years. We believe the Boulder County land use recommended alternative site is worse off, as it negatively impacts the applicant, and it doesn't solve, but it rather worsens, the the view issue for many more neighbors to the east and to the north. In our opinion, the land use hastily selected this site due to legal pressures and public comments without fully opening dialogue between the wards and all of the adjacent homeowners. We are requesting that the planning committee table any decision today, as we firmly believe a suitable site for all parties can be chosen. Tom and Jana Ward are good people, and we believe we can work with them to effectively allow their desired structure location to remain, as well as screen it with vegetation to help with any view issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Russell Osgood. Hearing no response.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, could you please state your name and your address before you begin your statement?
Russell Osgood. My wife and I own the residence at seven nine eight four Sagebrush Court in Willow Glen subdivision. We have owned that property since nineteen seventy. House has been there for forty-nine years. I would really like to speak on behalf of the twenty people who signed the petition and the eight letters that were filed with the staff objecting to any of the structures being built there. Willow Glen has forty-two lots and thirty-four residents, which means that two-thirds or more of the people who reside there said, "We do not want the structures." The early part of our discussion seemed to be A or B. Do we have the structures where they are now, or do we move them? I think that the matter that's before the commissioners today should not be A or B, but let's look at what really is the question. Should this be allowed to be built there at all? The wards have shown what their concern is. They just go ahead and do it. They built the structure without a building permit. Why? Because the pole barn required a building permit, and I can build a temporary structure. That is one heck of a temporary structure. I think you and the pictures are well aware of that. The same deal goes with the pipe that Gail Udall talked about. We can dense, we can concentrate the flow of the water from our property and dump it on somebody else. That's just the attitude the wards have had. They haven't dealt with the fields. They haven't dealt with the zoning people when they'd said it was a violation. I think the planning commission should look at this and say, "No, we're not going to approve this. We're not going to move them here or there, plant trees. We are just going to deny the application to have these structures." Thank you.
Thank you. Next person we have signed up is Marjorie Lynch. Marjorie, are you here? Marjorie?
So we received a comment from her that I think was put into the chat. She had to leave the meeting to attend something else.
All right, so she's not here. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Commissioner Goldfarb, this is Kim Sanchez. Just to clarify, she's, Marjorie Lynch is not here, but her comment that she would like you to review is in the chat box. So you can go to the chat feature in Teams and read her message.
And how do we do that?
Um, Anna, I will defer to you to.
Sure, Anna, owner, staff. So if you scroll your mouse toward the bottom of the screen in the toolbar that appears there, to the right, there's a bubble, Show Conversation. Just click that button.
Got it.
And the chat will be available for review.
I do see it. Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who, from the public, who wishes to speak at this time?
Yeah, I would, Michael Widdam, I would like to speak.
Rhubarb? You know, they got rhubarb to make pie with it.
My name is Michael Widdam. I live at eighty twenty-one Fox Ridge Court.
Can you hold on just, just one second? We've got somebody talking about rhubarb pie.
Yeah, sorry, I'm in a, I'm, I'm at my work location, and so there's noise in the background. I apologize for that.
Okay, we're, we're hearing you.
Yeah, hang on one sec. Okay, let's, let's try this, and if there's too much background, I only have a couple things to say briefly.
Could you please state your name and address before you can begin your statement?
Yes, my name is Michael Widdam. I live at eighty twenty-one Fox Ridge Court.
So there is a question right now that also.
So I just, I I agree with much of what's been said by many of the people in my neighborhood. I I, and I've looked at the the recommendation from planning. I think what happens if you leave the structures where they are, the people more to the north in our neighborhood are impacted. If you follow planning commission's recommendation, people are a little more exposed towards the south. I agree with the others that it'll take a decade before trees are going to screen these things. I use the pasture a lot. I walk out there with my dog, a number of others of us do. There'll be an exposure wherever we move it, if it's moved on the eastern part of the ward's property. I would just suggest that moving it to a western portion of their property, maybe screening it with their existing barn, if they put them immediately west of their existing barn, it might impact their own views a little bit, but it certainly would mitigate the visual from those of us in the east. And I guess that would just be my main point is if, if they are to be relocated, I think they could easily be located with much less impact. There's no neighbors to the south. There's no neighbors to the north. There's maybe one slightly to the southwest. There's twenty-five of us on the east, and it just seems like the best of all worlds would be to move the structures in line with their, with their existing barn and and put a few trees on either side, and that would effectively eliminate it from the views from the east, which is the people that have issues. So I would just put that out there for consideration.
Okay, thanks much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Hey, I'm not, I'm not hearing anyone else coming forward, so Ryan, is there anything further that you would like to say?
Sure, I would like to clarify maybe a couple of things here. I think first to the first comment that we heard, or public comment that we heard, it referenced a SEAS, which is a season extending agricultural structure. The commenter referenced that, reason being for that, the original application when it came in, stated by the applicant, was referring to it as being a season extending agricultural structure. The important distinction with it being called a season extending agricultural structure is that is the type of structure that the applicant was referring to during his presentation is something that does not require building permits. However, what has been built and what is being proposed does not qualify as a season extending agricultural structure, because what is being built and proposed is twenty-four feet in height, so it can't be considered a season extending agricultural structure. So when this application came in, it was originally referred out as being a season extending agricultural structure. After staff reviewed, we found that, no, this is not one of those structures, and thus we actually re-referred the structure, or re-referred the application, called it what it is, which is an agricultural structure, and have the, did the review going forward as an agricultural structure. So that, I I want to make that distinction. I think there was some original confusion that came from what, what is the structure actually being. It was kind of derived from that, that point. And then I think the only other thing that I would want to clarify with this is I would point out that in staff's analysis, again, and their recommendation of the location of the agricultural structures, staff looked at using techniques of clustering the structures near the existing barn and providing trees to screen it as mitigation to to visual impact along with keeping disturbance, disturbed areas to a minimum, especially important when there's ag lands of national importance like there are here. So that was, that'd be the two things that I would like for, to provide some clarification to.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything further from the applicant?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll open it up now for discussion among the commissioners. Comments from anyone?
Commissioner Goldfarb, this is Commissioner McMillan. Can I just ask staff for one clarifying point first, please?
Yes.
The, the twenty-five thousand square foot limit, it is not a, is a limit beneath which you do not have to go through the special review use process, but if you trip over the twenty-five thousand square foot limit, which we we are here, that is what kicked you into this special review process. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I, I think that's important to note that, and I think some of the commenters said, hey, they're over the twenty-five thousand square feet limit. That's true. It doesn't disqualify the consideration of the request. So I I just think it's important to note that they're following the rules by, if you go over twenty-five thousand square feet, you do have to come in for this review. So that was important for me to clarify, and I think it maybe answered some questions that folks are answer, were asking. I'll stop with that and think about my comments unless anyone else has some other questions for staff.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I'll just add on to that, that, you know, my understanding of all this is if you, if if there is a proposal to go above twenty-five thousand square feet, if you meet the thirteen requirements, then you are allowed to do that. So just in terms of our decision-making process, we're looking at those thirteen requirements and trying to make an evaluation based on that. And it's, but there's not a, we try, we try to make it as objective as possible.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. So the twenty-five thousand square feet is the triggering event for the special use review. What is the trigger for the site plan review? Can you just clarify that?
So site plan review has potentially a couple of different triggers that could be asked for, you know, again, as Commissioner McMillan stated, we're in a, Commissioner Bloomfield stated, we are looking at this as a special use, though, so not within site plan review triggers. I, it'd be, because this is over twenty-five thousand square feet, consideration of, you know, other type of review processes just aren't available to what's going on here and wouldn't be considered with that. So I think that, you know, furthering that distinction for why we're, we're discussing it here is, is because of the square footage that, you know, frankly, is just already there. And then the ask for additional requires the special use.
Okay, thank you. There were some people who were referring to site plan review, and I just want to make make that clear. Okay, other questions or comments by commissioners?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I guess just to kind of summarize my thoughts at the moment, it seems like there's, you know, some, some folks that are saying that the, that the proposed location from the applicant is okay, and some that are saying that the county's proposal is better. I heard that the applicant, it sounds like the county's location would be pretty challenging and from just a, a use standpoint. I think for, for kind of where I'm at right now is it seems like the current location with the screening is, is, is a good solution, although, as folks have pointed out, there are some, you know, there's definitely a question of like, well, how long are these trees going to take before they're actually blocking the view or before they're, they're screening the, the, the. screening the, the, the building? And I'm wondering if there's actually a possibility, I heard from the applicant, that, that for this particular building, white was all that was available. I'm not an agricultural buildings expert, so I can't verify that. But I'm wondering if there's actually a possibility of, of basically, you know, attaching a lighter colored tarp over it, at least until the trees grow to be screened, because it does seem like from some of the pictures that, you know, that the, the white structure is, is rather glaring, shall we say? Anyway, those are my, my opening thoughts.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. I had an opportunity to drive out 75th Street and also drive through the subdivision to look at the structure. And it's big and it looks like it doesn't belong. It doesn't look like any other agricultural structure that I can think of within the county or anywhere. I just don't see this as an agricultural structure. I, I, I think back to other docket's we've had where there has been an issue of the unsightliness of something. And I think of, for example, cell towers and how we require those cell towers to be disguised because they are an eyesore. And I, I see this structure in the same way in that I don't think that it's compatible with the surroundings. And I would have to disagree with staff who says, who stated in their recommendations in their report that the surrounding area is primarily agricultural. That may be that there's a lot of agricultural land around there, however, the property to the east is not. It's a, it's a housing development. And here in Boulder County, our views are, our most spectacular views are to the west. And so people who have, have lived in this area have prized their western views. And this structure, and if there's a second structure of the same size and the same color, is in my mind really an eyesore and inappropriate to be in that location. And I know this causes some difficulties because we have an intersection here of agriculture and residential, but again, even, even if this were a totally agricultural setting, I'm afraid I still think that this is an absolute eyesore and not appropriate for the area. So talking about what the appropriate location is, screening it with trees, all those kinds of things, in, in my mind, this is simply not an appropriate structure for the area. And trying to do something with the trees, I agree, it's going to be years before that's any kind of a screen at all. And, and I don't think that that's a good solution. As far as what's an appropriate location, whether it's the location that currently exists for the one structure and putting a second structure there, or the location that staff has recommended, I, I think either way, residents to the east are impacted by this. So in my mind, this isn't simply an issue of location, it's an issue of the structure itself. And I, I can't see that this is an appropriate structure and would not feel comfortable voting to go ahead with this at this point.
So Commissioner Fitch? I think there may be questions that we should discuss about the mitigation of the view. But I also want to make the point that I think staff was correct in stating, I think there are five different paragraphs from the comp plan in terms of the importance of agriculture in the Boulder, Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. So I see a trade-off between something that will enhance the agricultural production and agricultural use of the ward property versus, so the storage, I think, is a use by right in that rural residential zone versus the visual impacts. I think visual impacts are important. We protect them, scenic corridors, but those are for visual impacts for public spaces. Those are not a county protection for existing views for private property owners. I think this issue comes up, people who live next to a farm, who have an existing view and somebody builds something in it, that clearly will affect their aesthetic appreciation of their properties if they don't like what the building looks like. But we, everybody who lives in Boulder faces the possibility that somebody behind them or beside them to the west is going to pop up a, a single-story ranch up into a double, two-story building, or just build an ugly building. And there's nothing in Colorado law, there's nothing in the comprehensive plan that says we have a control over the aesthetics. So I, I think that, I think there really is a tension here between saying we, because people's views are impacted, the public testimony makes it pretty clear that some people want to have it, the impact to be on somebody else in the neighborhood, some people don't want it to be built at all. But I think that's not really the question. The question, does the proposal as, as stated or as conditioned really meet the land use criteria for this kind of special use review? So given that it's in the agricultural zone and we are talking about agricultural buildings, I think the question to me is really one, how best could we locate these things on the site? And we have conflicting views being presented between the staff and some of the neighbors. Or whether there's something, trees is one form of screening, it may be, as some of the neighbors have suggested, changing the color and type of particularly the exterior film, whatever that is, of the building might be a different solution. So I guess, but I, but I think, I guess I don't agree with Ann that this type of building is itself either such an eyesore or something that really is not compatible with an agricultural use. So I'll stop there.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. In, in response to Commissioner Fitch's statement in regard to blocking views or interfering with view corridors from public places, I went, just went back and read, and I don't see anything that talks specifically about public views. There's general language in regard to determining compatibility, that the board should consider the location of the structures and other improvements on the site, the size, height, massing, number and arrangement of structures, design of structures and other site features. So I don't think that we are just talking about public view sheds. I, I think it's, I think it's both public and private.
This is Commissioner Hilton. In the second standard for the special review, where it talks about that the, the proposal will be compatible with the surrounding area, the surrounding area does, you know, specifically say the characteristics and nearby development and neighborhoods. So I'm assuming that to me, and, you know, private, potentially private property, and that scenic vistas in this, in the surrounding area and the characteristics of nearby development and neighborhoods is something that we are allowed to consider as the second standard with regards to, to compatibility with the surrounding area.
Commissioner Fitch again, I, I think Dan and Ann's point is, are well taken. Article two talks about, specifically says, including but not limited to scenic vistas, mountainous terrain, agricultural lands, characteristics of nearby development and neighborhoods. What it does not say is that we guarantee to whatever neighbors are there that their property, their existing views will not be impacted. And so all I'm saying is that I don't think we can or should say, existing property owners can't do anything that's going to affect what their neighbors to the east in whatever situation are existing seeing. And this is a tendency, I think, to assume that you have a right to keep that view that you've always had. But I don't think there's anything in the comp plan that says that's a criteria of approval.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. I would agree with you on that, Commissioner Fitch. However, I, I, I think, for example, had a typical building, agricultural building been erected, such as a pole barn, you wouldn't have this issue of the fact that this is an eyesore in this particular area. And I don't know what the neighbors would think about a pole barn. I think that perhaps some of them would say, I don't want that pole barn there blocking my view. However, I think that that sort of structure is compatible with agricultural use that's common to this area and would be appropriate for the correction there on that, on the ward's property. I, I guess I am objecting to the structure itself, and I wonder whether, if this had gone through proper channels, this type of structure would even have been approved initially. We can't know that because the applicant didn't go through proper channels to build this, but that's, that's a question that is kind of lurking in the back of my mind. So, so it, for me, it, it really does come down to the fact that this is a large, white, reflective structure with bright red stripes at both ends that is very visible from the neighborhood and I don't think is compatible based on the criteria. And I understand that these criteria are, exist to make our decision as objective as possible, however, they're guidance and they're not hard and fast rules. And obviously, there can be disagreement on what one considers compatible or not compatible. And in this particular case, I'm coming down on the side of the fact that I don't think that this type of structure is compatible in this area.
So Commissioner Fitch, again, I, I think those are valid points for discussion. My suspicion is if it had gone through the proper process in the beginning for the existing artic shed, neighbors would have looked at that design and had exactly the same objections that they do now. So it's just a question of really replaying how we look at. I think the two questions are really, which is the best location for the, for these two structures? And does the structure itself in its current design acceptable or not? Or is there some condition you could impose that would make it acceptable in terms of our criteria, not necessarily acceptable or desirable from the perspective of the neighbors who are going to have to look at whatever it is?
Commissioner McMillan, great discussion, everyone. I basically explained the, the thoughts that I've had going on in my head on either side of this issue, but I think we're, we're appropriately focused on condition of approval number two, which is that compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. And Commissioner Goldfarb, I think you said it well, that the reason that's difficult is we have the intersection of agricultural land and residential land. While what's being proposed might be compatible with agricultural land, it's, you know, it's probably not compatible with residential. So you've got this inherent conflict here. I certainly appreciate the concerns of the neighbors, and I, I also appreciate the, the desire of the property owner to have productive agricultural land, which is called for in our comp plan and a, and a, you know, a big goal of the county. So I, I don't think, you know, we probably have 10 different opinions on where these structures should go or could go or might be able to go, and they're, I, I don't think we're, we should be here trying to figure out that best location, in this meeting at least. I do have two issues that I know I have with liability question. And first is the color. I, the bright white reflective, I, I just, I don't know how that becomes compatible with the surroundings. I have, I have a hangout there. Absolutely think screening is a, is a good addition. I'm glad that that's in there. Any, any motion to approve, I would, I would definitely want that screening to be part of. And then as far as the location, you know, they're both imperfect, and there's probably other places that I could suggest, and I don't even know if those would work for the owner, and I, I just want to maybe steer us away from trying to relocate these things on the fly because I, I just don't think we're going to get to the best solution that way. I think we should, if, if we are going to have a motion that, for approval, I think we should be clear in picking one of the two locations that's in front of us. And, and personally, I'm still not exactly sure how I would vote on that motion. I do think that the staff's analysis provides some good, some good reasoning for putting them where they are. But again, the color and the screening are two issues that I think we need to resolve through conditions. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Commissioner McMillan, what, what do you mean by resolve through conditions? I'm not sure I understand that. I'm, I'm hearing you say that you have an issue with the color.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I would, I would not, I would not vote for a motion that had the, the existing structures and their existing color moving forward. color moving forward. I think that's a compatibility issue that does not square up for me with condition of approval number two. I don't know how, again, I'm worried trying to do things on the fly because I haven't shopped for these types of structures either. I don't know what's out there and what's available. I just have to believe that there is some sort of way to find a different type of structure that blends in, the color blends in a little bit better than the bright white. Particularly the reflective part, I think, is really noticeable and will be tough to live close to. So that's what I mean by conditions. If we were to recommend approval, perhaps the condition would be something of, you know, finding a more compatible color with the surroundings, a color that blends in.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Thank you. Yeah, I guess I would, you know, you mentioned not knowing about whether there are other colors of structures that would be available, but given the fact that I'm not aware of any other bright white structures that are used to store hay, and there's a lot of hay stored in Boulder County, that there are other types of structures available to store Like a more notable pole barn. I guess when I think about this and talking about, you know, trying to disguise it somehow with trees for screening, or I don't know, somebody mentioned putting a tarp over it or something, lipstick on a pig comes to mind.
So this is Commissioner Quigley. I think I've got a viewpoint that's slightly different and try to give my rationale here is that, you know, this is agricultural use. This is an agriculture area that they want to be using it for. And to me, these types of structures are now kind of what's used in agriculture. So if you look out through the state and the county and the region, you know, what you run into is we've got this kind of, you know, kind of idea in our mind, what like a really nice old barn could be for storing hay. But those structures no longer meet kind of building requirements. And if they do, they really become prohibitively expensive to do agriculture in these areas. So we're kind of at this, another constraint here is that per our guidance, we want to be promoting agriculture use, but we don't, we want to do it in a way that meets the environment from a visual standpoint from neighbors. We don't want to make it prohibitively costly for the owners because that would make it so it's not a viable option for them. So we have all these conflicting things that go on. And to me, when I, you know, what the staff put together, what the owner has mentioned how they're going to use it and where they're going to put it and the trees, and even the neighbors, right? I can totally understand how they wouldn't want to be viewing a large white structure that's reflective. But when I look at the overall whole of what everyone's, the comments are and what they're putting in place, I would be for it, right? I think that the location could be negotiated a bit, maybe, I don't know if that's the right term, but between the owner and I think what the staff planners looked at, they tried to say, hey, this is what would make sense. But I think if it got revisited from a youth standpoint from the owner and coming from comments from neighbors here, I think staff could, you know, the two of them could adequately come up with a good location for it. And then as they put surrounding trees to help mitigate the visual impact of it, to me, that's in line with what we should be doing with agricultural use in the county and when it meets kind of the land use code that's put in place. I don't see an issue. You know, Commissioner Goldfarb, I understand your concerns. I don't necessarily disagree with them, but when I put into place that we want to be doing agriculture use, we do want to be promoting this in the county, I do think it aligns with other structures in the county as we see being used. My stance would be to move forward with it with the condition of revisiting the location between the owner and the staff planners.
Sorry, Sam, go ahead.
Commissioner Fitch speaking. I think that says to me that we ought to really table the question. If we're going to pass something, I can't figure out on the fly, as Gavin said. So how you phrase a condition that says staff and the applicant or staff and the neighbors or staff convokes a kumbaya movement and decides on location. Again, the impact of these things does clearly depend on where on that site it goes. I think staff worked hard on this because they're trying to protect those agricultural lands of national importance. But if we don't sort of agree about the color or we don't agree about the type of construction, about the red stripes on the end, about whether it's east-west orientation or north and south location, then I think we're not at a point that we can approve this. But I also don't think we have simply just to come up with some novel condition. Situation doesn't, it's not really something that we can engage in negotiation over this. We have to say it meets the criteria or it doesn't meet the criteria. And again, I agree with my fellow commissioners, criteria two is the one we're all sticking on. And so unless there's some clear majority about which way we want to go on criteria two, then it seems to me the proper action is to table it and give staff and the other stakeholders in this more time to try to work out what alternatives might be better.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. I would agree with you, Commissioner Fitch. I think that would be appropriate at this point to give staff and the applicant an opportunity to take another look at this and given the input today of testimony, public testimony, as well as discussion by the commissioners to come back with another
Commissioner Hilton, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes. So I wanted to say that, you know, for a structure of this size and impact or structures of this size and impact, we as planning commission regularly, you know, try to mitigate those impacts using conditions, including color, material, vegetation and fence screening. And in this case, we're sort of saying that nothing can be done about material and color, or at least we don't believe anything could be done about it. And I'm just not convinced that enough is being done to really mitigate those visual impacts, especially the color and material in consideration of where this sits on the lot and relative to the surrounding area. And I think that we, you know, again, we are supposed to consider the compatibility and the visual impacts and the characteristics of nearby development and neighborhoods are something that we should be considering. So I don't feel like enough is being done to mitigate those impacts.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Commissioner Hilton, would you, do you think that you would be in favor of sending this back to staff and the applicant to do further work? Are you looking to pass this as is? Are you looking to veto this?
I would either be in favor of tabling and sending it back to staff and applicant to do some additional work or to condition it in such a way that we felt comfortable, even if it meant that it was not, you know, not something that was possible with the current buildings that were there. So something like making them a different color or material, you know, even if that required an actual different structure.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again, which sounds to me like there would need to be further input from staff on that possibility then.
Yeah, and possibly from the applicant as well.
Right, right. Okay, all right.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I've got a couple of thoughts. I would say that in general, I'm not particularly in favor of tabling it unless we have something that we truly need a decision on. You know, looking at the location and taking into consideration the areas or the agriculture of national importance, seems like, you know, the location, we're kind of down to the two, one from the applicant and one from staff. I think A, if staff had thought that there were, you know, significant other options, they might have presented those. But I think we're trying to minimize the impact of development into this kind of tighter space here. As far as the, you know, the visual impact, I think, is really a lot of what we're talking about here. Commissioner Goldfarb, I think, for me, if I do a quick search on pole barns in Google, I come up with a bunch of pictures that are, yeah, they're a little bit more traditional. The colors are all over the place. Some of them are completely bright red. Some of them are completely white. To me, it's not the shape of the building. I think when you're, you know, hundreds of yards away, it's really, is it a bright white reflective building? Or is it something that blends in a little bit more with what we're used to? So I don't have an issue with the type of building, but I think I agree with Commissioner McMillan, just in terms of the color. So I think for me, it's an issue of the screening and the fact that, you know, trees are going to take a while to grow. Those are my thoughts.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. I'm not suggesting that it has to be a pole barn. And I would agree with both you and Commissioner McMillan that it's the color and the reflectiveness for me that are big issues. So, yeah, so I'm agreeing with you along those lines.
So again, Commissioner Bloomfield, for me, would be to, you know, do we have a set of conditions that we could apply to what we currently have that would satisfy us in terms of, you know, the color and or
Commissioner McMillan, I kind of fall in line with Commissioner Bloomfield in terms of how I think we should proceed. And in my opinion, that's recommending approval of the staff location with conditions which address the additional screening, probably the same language that staff proposed. I thought that was fine, but we could wordsmith that. And then the additional language that I have yet to come up with in my head and maybe someone else has an idea would be something to address the materials that are being used and particularly the color and reflectiveness. So I'll continue to think about that one, but I think as far as the course of action I'm moving towards an approval with additional conditions to address the concerns about compatibility that everyone has raised. I don't know that tabling would really, without specific direction, would really get us to a better place at a later date. That's not to say that if we, and this is for the applicant and the neighbors, that if we have this meeting tonight and we give direction and you all, between now and the county commissioners meeting, can come together and find a plan that you think, you know, works better for everyone, that is absolutely, you know, I think you're prerogative to try and figure out as neighbors, but we have to, I think, vote on the plan that's in front of us this evening, one way or the other. And so my inclination is to move towards a motion to approve the staff location with language with regards to the color and landscaping. Those are, that's what I think we should do.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. So did you want to, you had mentioned reflectiveness earlier as well? The color and reflectiveness.
Yeah, lump those two together. While others are talking, let me, I'll try and think of some language of what that looks like.
Yeah, and this is Commissioner Quigley. Commissioner McMillan, I generally agree with your approach there and I like it. One comment would be the location as recommended by staff, you know, we got feedback from the owner that that is not from an agricultural use standpoint, maybe not ideal. And I think the staff's goal was to approach it from a visual standpoint, and I think they did a good job there. And somehow I'd like to be able to kind of wrap in of taking both into account, right, of how do they take both visual and agricultural use? If the staff's coming back and saying, hey, from an agricultural use standpoint, that's still a great location, then I'll back them up because I don't claim to be an expert there. I'm just kind of taking the input from the owner. But I wouldn't mind understanding that a little bit better, right? To make sure that the location, all aspects have been considered with the location of it.
This is Commissioner Hilton. And I think part of staff's decision-making that they presented was also the centralization of buildings so that we didn't, there wasn't this distribution of buildings widely across the property, especially given the value of the agricultural land. So that was a big part of their decision, I understood.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. I would like to feel that I was in a position to approve something today with conditions to be able to allow this to go forward. However, what we're hearing is that there are concerns about the color, material, reflectiveness. We're also hearing concerns about the location. On the one hand, staff is looking to mass, to cluster buildings. However, the applicant says that that doesn't necessarily work. I'm just feeling like there's too much that I have concerns with in terms of both location and the structure itself in terms of the color and material reflectiveness, that to say, yes, we're approving this, but we don't really know but we don't really know about the location, and we're really, really concerned about the the material, color and reflectiveness. In my mind, what we're saying is, we don't really approve of this, but we'll go ahead and approve it, and y'all figure it out. And I just don't feel comfortable. I feel like there's too much not too much is not settled to go to go ahead and approve this at this time. I would I guess, in in saying we're going to table it, I don't necessarily feel that that's an appropriate avenue, just to say, let's table it. I think what we need to do is to give direction to staff and to the applicant to further look into the issues that we've all got concerns with. I'd like to hear what other people think about that.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I would say I don't know, I I'm comfortable with, I think we do this a lot where we say, yeah, you can do this within these parameters, and one of those parameters could be that you you can, you can do what what is proposed, ignoring location for a second, as long as the color and the reflectivity are are not bright white and super reflective, something that's a little bit more earth tone, or however one phrase that. As far as the location is concerned, I definitely agree with Commissioner Quigley as far as the staff recommendation not being as practical. And so I'm wondering if there's a way that, you know, we could say either, you know, we go with the applicant proposed location, or we say, you know, the staff proposed location with, you know, allowable modifications is agreed upon between staff and the owner to make it more, you know, practically practically usable. And then I guess I kind of also feel like, you know, we can, we can set some of those parameters. And if for some reason they don't work, then then, you know, the the applicant can all can always reapply with some modifications.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. So what would be your what would you be comfortable with in terms of the first issue, which is the structure itself? I see this as a two parter, where we're talking the structure, location. So what would you feel comfortable with in terms of the structure as far as conditions?
As far as the structure goes, I would say I would feel comfortable with a condition that basically says that the color and reflectivity have to be, again, I don't know exactly what the language is, but more in line with with agricultural uses, maybe staff has some language that they use frequently when it comes to, you know, using earth tones and and something that blends in with the surrounding more. I think that would, that would satisfy me as far as the structure goes.
And what about the location? What would, what would you feel comfortable with as far as a condition in regard to location?
As far as the location is concerned, I would say I favor the applicant's location because it seems like that's most easily screened and 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 practically screened in terms of still having access and whatnot. It also does seem like you get some, you know, some stacking effect. I feel like the the staff's location, while you do have a sort of minimized eastern elevation, you do have the southern elevation still. And so I feel like that's just more more difficult to screen.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. The southern elevation is pretty much screened by that barn because the barn's to the south of it. So they're going to be and and from the south, there's really nothing there until you get to Arapahoe.
Yeah, and I'll say, Commissioner Bloomfield again, I'll say that I'm not not, you know, wedded to to either one. I'm just kind of leaning more towards the applicant applicant's location.
Yeah, Commissioner Quigley, you know, I I'm in line with that, right? And I think, you know, as we look at conditions, I think we can we we could recommend staff to to revisit the the color and reflectivity in the location with this new information. And, you know, I kind of look at them as as experts in this area, and I would be comfortable with allowing them to to make that those best decisions. Taking all these things into account. I don't feel like I necessarily need to become a an expert in in these tents and the color and options. I feel like that's, they they do a really good job there of understanding what's in line. And so feelings, we could move forward and and just say, hey, ask for the the staff to to revisit those items, but allow them allow them the the flexibility to to make updates and and move forward from there.
This is Commissioner Hilton. In terms of the location, I think that that's a pretty important thing that we're considering. And I would not be in favor of any type of scenario where the location could could change in any significant way. As we've heard, there's a lot of impacts to surrounding surrounding neighbors and and the neighborhood. I I don't think, I think it's part of our job to evaluate the proposal, and we shouldn't be deferring something as important as the location to be flexible down the road. It's our job to consider public input and the impacts, not to just sort of let that be done at a later time.
So Commissioner Hilton, this is Commissioner Bloomfield. Would you be amenable to something that was a condition that says, you know, we we approve this with the staff location with allowances for slight modifications for usability or something along those lines?
Yeah, if I guess if there were, you know, various, if it was conditions where we were only talking about very minor configuration changes, but certainly not, you know, maybe the first, maybe the applicant proposed location is better than the staff proposed location, and and you could come to an agreement at a later time. That I think is is not appropriate.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. I I understand that people want to go forward with something, but I'm I'm just hearing that there's too much that is not settled in terms of location. You know, and saying, well, you know, we like the staff location, and maybe you can, you know, fudge it a little bit, but what, you know, what's that little bit? I'm I'm concerned about that in terms of the the color, reflectiveness, material of the building. We want something that's more compatible with what normal buildings are in this area, and staff has the expertise to come up with that. Okay, but you know, we've got a proposal before us at this point. And at what point are we changing things so much in terms of allowing for conditions and wiggle room in the future to to work things out that this isn't really approving what's before us? And and tabling, it doesn't sound good to me, but sending it back with and 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 telling staff and the applicant to take another look based on discussions today, which is again, something that we've done in the past, when we have situations where things seem unsettled, and allowing them to take another look at things. I would feel more comfortable with that than trying to come up with these conditions and trying to go forward when we're trying to give them leeway to come up with something that's that's appropriate. Either way, this is going to require more work. And sending it back, getting staff and the applicant to do the work, and then coming back with something that's more acceptable, I would feel more comfortable with.
So Commissioner Goldfarb, this is Commissioner Bloomfield. I I guess what one question that I have for you is I'm not sure which which commissioner made the point, but if we, I mean, I my feel is that if if we give them a little bit of leeway, and then they basically make the decision before they actually go for before the Board of County Commissioners, then the Board of County Commissioners can rule on something that is some that is more solid, if that makes sense. And and that way, I mean, one of the things that I'm just trying to avoid is, you know, having this go on for another couple of months. And and I'm wondering if there's a way that either that we could couch it, or or just the fact that, you know, we're basically just making a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, and we would want to have the staff and the applicant come to a more solid agreement for their decision.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb again. Let me ask staff what they think about going forward in that way. Or or also, or I don't know who we have here from the county attorney's office at this point.
Hi, this is Erica Rogers from the county attorney's office. Mark, can you state again, just briefly in summary, your proposal?
Sure. I mean, basically, my proposal would be to say that that we approve the application that we would like to see. Again, I'm not being exact with the phrasing here, but we would like to see more earth tones, less reflective building material. And that, you know, I would say that we choose one of the two locations. And if we choose the staff location, that we allow for some modification to make it more usable for the applicant.
Can I, can I add, just I think what I heard you say, Mark, and I said, these things would be attempt to be addressed, these conditions that we, that Mark outlined, attempt to be addressed between staff and the applicant prior to the county commissioners' meeting. So that there is, at that point, a way to see if they have addressed the the conditions.
Yes, yes.
This is Summer Frederick from Community Planning and Permitting. I'll jump in here quickly as a staff response. I think you have an application that's in front of you, and as was pointed out, your action will be a recommendation to the board. And so I think staff would staff's position would be that a motion would be made and voted on. Whatever that motion looks like as put forward by the commissioners, I I think I'll stop there for right now.
This is, this is Erica Rogers from the county attorney's office again. My recommendation would be just to be as specific as possible as far as what information you want staff to examine before the B O C C hearing, but I don't see a problem with leaving some of those issues to be discussed.
This is, this is Summer Frederick again, and and I would echo that, that if if the motion is made and action is taken to move forward, and you do want staff to look at something that in between now and the commissioners' hearing, that that is very that that the commission provides clear direction to staff on what you want the outcome, what your desired outcome of that new examination would be. I would also say that if the choice or if the action is taken to table this, that staff is also given very specific direction on what you would be looking for when this comes back in front of you.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Summer, let me ask you then, with that in mind, what you just said, what Commissioner Bloomfield was talking about in terms of setting conditions of a structure that's less reflective and more earth tone, is that adequate direction?
If that, if if the motion is made that that there are condition that that you, the planning commission, would like to see recommended conditions of approval that address that, we can certainly include recommended conditions of approval that address color and reflectivity, and we can look at that. Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And I I guess so here's a question. Is it possible to change the color of this structure? Or is it white, and it's white, and that's what it is?
This is Summer Frederick from staff. It's my understanding, and I believe we heard in the applicant's presentation, that this particular structure and the manufacturer it comes from, white is the color of this particular product.
So if that's the case, then what we're saying is that this structure is not acceptable if we go forward with a condition that says we want something more earth tone and less reflective.
I I don't know that that is necessarily true. I think that's something that we can, we can look at after this hearing, and staff can talk to the applicant and confirm that, see if there are any alternatives, and take that that discussion up after the this particular hearing.
Okay.
This is, this is Dale.
This is the one word. I didn't know if I'm allowed to talk or not.
Let's, let's. Dale Case, what was your comment?
All right, Dale Case, Director of Community Planning and Permitting. I just wanted to comment that since we're looking at this because the structure is there already, but the structure is built without the permits and without the necessary review. And so if it is planning commissions, and the counties want to have something different type of structure, different colors, we can require that. It's, I mean, it's not, it's technically not there from our regulatory eyes yet. And so this is the process where we're looking at this structure and looking at this use and saying, yes, it meets the criteria if this, this, and this are done. So if it's something planning commission wants to do, recommend colors or different materials, that is within the purview as far as I can see.
Okay. Thanks. I think that's a good I think that's a good, I think that's a good point, that it's as if this structure isn't currently existing, and that, and that that's how we need to approach this in terms of this issue that we've talked about regarding color, less, and reflectivity and material. So.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I kind of feel like we're all on the same page as that, as far as that goes. I think we're all concerned about the color. I'm wondering if, if it would be valuable to let the applicant speak for a minute or two, and maybe, maybe he has some, some thoughts that would help us, help us through this.
Okay, this is Tom. We get in, well, I'll just tell you what I've been thinking, is I've been listening, and this is, this is all good stuff, but probably within, I'm sure in a mile radius of where we're sitting, where I'm sitting right now, there's probably, you know, 25 of these buildings, and, and if you, I'll just say structures, right, temporary structures. At the intersection of 75th and Valmont, there's one property that probably has four or five of them themselves. One of them is as large as this building, and it's used to store hay. It's green on the ends rather than, than red. The, the issue with color is any other color than white will absorb heat, and typically what you're storing, you're not trying to bake, and so that's why you see all of these buildings are typically white, that, you know, because you're trying to keep the heat out. So you're, you're up against that. And then in terms of, you keep talking about reflectivity, part of the issue is the material that's been selected on this is selected so that it can handle the heavy loads of snow. So it's, it is a heavier plastic, and plus, to be a more efficient building, it has vertical sides. You know, you see, we all see hoop buildings, but for storing hay, for storing hemp, they're not very efficient. You can't, you can only get a center line of hay, for example, down a hoop where you, you need the rectangular shape for the other. You know, the location debate, I'm fine putting it basically wherever, you know, the decision is made, that's, that's fine. I think that part of the issue that came up with moving the location, though, is, as you heard today, one group of neighbors was vocal in their immediate response to this, and the rest of the neighbors, I think, and I don't know anybody that lives over there, but I think the rest of them did like, like we do when we receive these kinds of things, you read them, and then you say, that's fine, people own the property, they can do whatever they want, and so you ignore it. And then when they started hearing about this on Thursday, and Thursday is the first time I saw the new location for the building as well, so I never got a chance to address it with planning. We all saw it the same day when it came online. And so I think that they, planning was doing what their job is, they were listening to constituents, and, and they moved it, but they weren't hearing from all of them, and there, there seems to be various groups over there in terms of the location and what they're talking about. You know, it doesn't, it really doesn't make any difference to me. I think I can, you know, I just have to be, the building needs to be functional, and the way they're stacked right now, they're not ideally functional, I guess is the, the best way to say it. Side by side, I mean.
Thanks, Tom.
Sure.
Sorry, this is Commissioner McMillan. Can I, I don't know if others want to have other things they'd like to add, but I was thinking about perhaps making a motion that, and when I make this motion, I hope that we discuss it. I don't mean it to go straight to a motion and a vote right away, but if you have comments on this, let's please discuss them, but I feel like we need to, maybe this would help the conversation. So, the motion that I want to make is to recommend approval of docket with the, the structure is located in the staff suggested location, with all the conditions that's suggested by the applicant, excuse me, by staff, in addition to the landscape screening condition that was introduced in the, in the meeting today, and then two new conditions. The first of which is that, prior to the Board of County Commissioners meeting, the applicant will work with staff to identify color options that are more muted and designed to blend in with the surrounding, with the surroundings of the property, and I'm open to word smithing that, I think that's generally what we're trying to say. And then the second additional condition would be that minor modifications of the location of the buildings for functionality and usability purposes may be approved by staff, but the orientation, layout, and sighting will remain mostly unchanged. Just trying to put some parameters on where that thing could move, and try to allow some flexibility for functionality purposes. So, in summary, and I don't, I may need to restate that motion, I guess right now I'm just throwing it out there for discussion, but would be approval on the existing location with one additional condition is added by staff for the landscaping, and then two additional conditions, which I've tried to craft on the fly here, and I can restate, but how does that sit with everyone if I were to make that motion?
Where is?
A lot of patience. Go ahead, Dan.
Oh yeah, this is Commissioner Hilton. Where is the language for the screening from the trees? Is that in the packet?
I think, Ryan, can you, can you put that up? It was in your presentation.
Yeah, let's see, I will share it here. It wasn't in the staff recommendation, this is something that we brought to here today, so it is, if you guys can see my screen here, I just highlighted it, all unhighlighted. That tree plantings east of near the agricultural structures be required to screen agricultural structures from views from the east.
In the past, I believe that we've included conditions that speak to like the maturity of trees, that, like, when they're initially put in, that they have to be of a certain maturity, like 10 feet or something. Does staff have any opposition to language like that?
Can you say that again?
Yeah, sorry. I believe in the past, we've conditioned applications to include reference to the maturity of trees, that, you know, they're not started small, but they are like 10 feet when they're initially put in. Does staff have any opposition to that concept?
No.
In regard to the issue of screening with trees, we, we heard in public testimony that it's not just directly to the east, and I don't recall, could, Ryan, could you put that picture back up again with the, with the screening that's proposed for the staff's approved location? Yeah, so I'm wondering also about screening from the north there, not just the east, because testimony was that there's also, that people see the side of it as well, not just the short end, but the longer end as well.
Sure, that could be included, you guys, or you can include that as in your conditions as well.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable with this, including screening on the north So I guess Gavin, in your, in your initial motion attempt here, you were talking about conditions, let's see, location, the staff location with the condition that there be landscape screening, if we said on the east.
And, not interrupt you, but I tried to write something while we were talking there, do you want?
Yeah.
Okay. Planning of large trees, and large trees, I think, is the part that you're trying to define, Dan, like, how big are these things when they go in? But planning of large trees will be added to the east and north of the agricultural structures, and will be required to screen the agricultural structures from views from the north and east. Is that?
I think that's, I think that's good. We may need to have more specific language in regard to large trees. The applicant, I know, stated that he was willing to put in trees as large as possible that can be successfully planted. I know that's more subjective.
Right.
So I don't know if you want to put that, the, the number of 10 feet, or, I mean, you can get trees that are bigger than 10 feet, I know that.
I think what we often do in these cases is like, you know, when we don't have a landscaping plan, it's kind of like, the landscaping plan will be reviewed by staff to confirm that the objective is being met. So I don't know how specific I feel like we should get, other than to say, you know, the objective here is to screen the views from the east and the north, and with large, as large of trees as possible, and staff's going to review the plan to ensure that that's, that that's happening.
I think that's good.
Okay. Let me try and write that down, but you can.
Okay, so if that, if we've got that one kind of dialed in, then the second issue is the location, and there's been a proposal, as I hear it, that, I think, Mark, you were talking about using the staff location, but with flexibility to allow for usage. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, let's see. So if we said that the staff location with flexibility to allow for agricultural use as has been proposed by the applicant.
That sounds good.
Gavin, did you come up with language for the first?
Yeah. Prior to building permit, a landscaping plan will be presented to staff for review and approval, which shows plantings of large trees on the north and east of the agricultural structures, designed to block views of the agricultural structures from the north and east.
Okay. All right. Do you want to try and put that together in a motion, all the things that we've discussed?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, what, what was that, with, there with Mark and the movement of the structures, could somebody summarize that for me again?
So what I was suggesting was that, that the location be, the location identified by staff, but with minor modifications, if necessary, to allow for agricultural use as it, as has been proposed by the applicant. Minor mod, yeah.
Okay. And then the color, prior to the BOCC meeting, the commissioners' meeting, the applicant will work with staff to identify different color options that are more muted and designed to blend in with the surrounding.
I would say color and reflectivity.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Give me one second.
Yep.
Okay, and I think the, what we're saying, or what the motion I'm going to make at least, is that we approve the, the location as presented by staff with the condition of allowing minor modifications as suggested by Mark and you, and I think that's, what I want to make clear is that my motion is to take the location as presented by staff with the ability for minor modifications. So if that's not clear in what I'm about to say, please let me know. So, I'm, okay, I moved the planning commission, recommend the Board of County Commissioners, conditionally approved docket SU-20-002, ward agricultural structures with the 11 conditions in the staff report, and three additional new conditions, which are as follows. Prior to building permit, a landscaping plan will be presented to staff for review and approval, which shows planting of large trees on the north and east of the agricultural structures, designed to block views from the north and east. Additional condition number two, prior to the Board of County Commissioners meeting, the applicant will work with staff to identify different color and reflectivity options that are more muted and designed to blend in with the surroundings. Condition, additional condition three, minor modifications of the location of the buildings may be approved to allow for agricultural use, as has been proposed by the applicant. And then, I'll just tack this onto the motion, the, the site plan that is part of this recommendation for approval is the one that is presented by staff in the staff packet.
Commissioner Bloomfield, one second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
I have just a small friendly amendment. I think the, the docket number was a little bit off, so this is docket SU-20-0002.
Okay.
Amendment accepted.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, let's take a roll call vote then. Commissioner Bloomfield?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitch?
You're unmute him.
Sam, unmute yourself.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Quigley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldfarb?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for your patience in this. It was a tough one to get through, but I think we got something that we can go forward with and feel comfortable with. So thank you. The last.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Last docket item that we have today is, let's see, docket LE-20-0002, Longspick Water District Pipeline Replacement.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Sean Gambrell, I'm the planner on this docket, LE-20-2. Let me share my presentation. Whoops, I just shared the wrong screen, hold on. Let me try that again. Okay. Are you all seeing the presentation now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the proposal here is for a location extent review to install 10,480 feet of eight-inch raw water pipe that will provide alternate access from the Southern Water Supply Project Pipeline to Longs Peak Water District's water treatment facility. There's no extension or expansion of service proposed as part of this request. Essentially, what has happened is the, the district is currently pulling water from the Southern Water Supply Project Pipeline, and the capacity, the full capacity of that pipeline has been bought out by a community city east, requiring the districts to place a new pipe parallel within the right-of-way of Vermillion Road to bring water from a nearby junction to their facility. The location commences at this parcel number here located just west of the end of Vermillion Road, crosses 13203 North 87th Street and 13205 North 87th Street, then crosses the Vermillion Road right-of-way and terminates at the facility, the water treatment facility at 9875 Vermillion Road. The zoning on these properties is agricultural and the applicant is Longs Peak Water District. So just a vicinity map here. These maps do differ slightly from what might be included in the, the applicant package. We were able to update the maps with a, a more accurate portrayal here. But these are the, the properties to the west of Vermillion Road that will be impacted. And then there is a, a private road here, which the pipe will run down, and then Vermillion Road to the treatment facility over here to the east. A closer view of those properties and essentially two miles of pipe running within the road right-of-ways, Vermillion Road and Journey Lane is the private road over here. So just looking at the comprehensive plan map, there are quite a few significant resources. There's some riparian area, there's some good, high visual quality areas, and then ag lands of national and statewide importance. However, just want to note again that essentially this entire pipeline is going to be within disturbed areas of either, again, that private road, Journey Lane, or Vermillion Road. Here's the Prebles Meadow Jumping Mouse Habitat. There is some suitable contiguous habitat in the area along both the Highland Ditch and the Rough and Ready Ditch, and we did receive some comments from a regulatory agency about that, which I'll refer to at that time. But just wanted to note those, those resources here. In terms of geo-hazards, just high swelling soil potential. Again, this will all be installed within road base, so no particular concern about this, though, just thought we would point that out. Public lands, there are lots of county conservation easements and some county open space in the vicinity. The property will impact at least one conservation easement or will be on property that's encumbered by an easement. Our conservation easement team has reviewed the project and has no concerns, finds that all the activities here are allowed within those conservation easements. And then just an aerial photo to show the character of the land. What you can see is a lot of agricultural parcels, not much residential development along this stretch of Vermillion Road. And you can see these areas back here where the pipe is on private property and within that private road. These are largely undeveloped areas. There is one home right around the ditch, but otherwise very kind of quiet rural area and not any major traffic on any of the roads here. Some quick site photos. Here is the Western Terminus, this is that junction facility with the Southern Water Pipeline. The big pipeline runs kind of this direction, runs just south of this private road. This is Journey Lane here where we're parked. This new pipe will run, basically shoot off at the end of Journey Lane and run up to this junction facility. Here is standing back at the Highland Ditch, looking up. That facility is in this area. This is that one home I referred to along Journey Lane. And again, we're right at the Highland Ditch Crossing here. Turning over to the side, this is the Highland Ditch, running very high. It's a, a large ditch, so just note that that's a, a resource in the area. Then up the road a little ways, looking back, you can see the character, very, very sparse development in this area of the county. And just a few more views, you know, mostly wide open along the roadside, lots of agricultural land. And finally, terminating to the east at the water treatment facility, up on the upper hand, or upper corner here is the office building, and then this is the treatment facility. They are right next door to each other. The pipe will actually terminate somewhere in this lower, lower photo and come across the road and go directly to that facility. For a site plan, we, we, this is all we have for a site plan. We do have full construction plans for the alignment and, which, you know, show the alignment in great detail, and that should have been included in the staff packet. However, just for an overview, this shows generally where the pipe will go, again, in this Journey Lane right-of-way for about a quarter of its length, and then in the Vermillion Road right-of-way for the other three quarters, a very small area outside of that Journey Lane right-of-way, just where the road bends and it disconnects to that junction facility. So in terms of referral responses, this was referred to the, the usual agencies and adjacent property owners. Didn't receive a whole lot of conflicts from, from any organizations, but I did want to note a few of the, few of the responses. Our building safety inspection team noted that building permits, grading permits, plan review, et cetera, would be required. Our engineering development review team had numerous comments and numerous recommended conditions of approval, all basically related to the construction process and permitting that would be needed for construction. Excel Energy also noted that there would need to be engineering review because they have gas facilities in the project vicinity, so that will be included as a condition. We also heard just yesterday, or just, yes, yesterday, from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and this should have been forwarded on as well, they'd like more details on the ditch crossings to avoid those impacts to the Prebles Meadow Jumping Mouse Habitat. And so we've proposed a, an additional condition for the, the board to consider if you'd like to, to review that. And then in terms of adjacent property owners, 63 referrals were sent out. No major concerns were received. We did receive one comment and support, noting that, you know, this is critical water infrastructure, and they'd like to see that service continued. So being a location and review, sorry, location and extent review, the criteria are extremely limited. The land use code reads that the purpose of the location and extent review is to determine whether a proposed public or quasi-public use or facility is consistent with the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. So I looked at various elements of the comprehensive plan, various goals of the plan, and these are, are my findings. In terms of the natural hazards and geology element, there are some high soil swelling potential areas and some landslide susceptibility in the area. However, this is all being constructed within a road, existing roadway, so no concerns about that. In terms of the open space element, this is adjacent to several county conservation easements and along the road runs past some county-owned lands. However, we received no specific concerns either from our natural resources planner or from our conservation easement staff. And again, because this will be in a road, we don't foresee any impacts to those open spaces. The transportation element, this is where we'll probably find the most impacts. There will be temporary impacts to both the public and private roads that this crosses, but no full closures are proposed. The applicant proposes to leave one lane of travel open with traffic control at all times. They also plan to essentially restore the road at the close of construction every day. So travel will still be possible on Vermillion Road, and transportation engineering staff suggested several conditions of approval to mitigate impacts and to, you know, ensure construction is done properly. Cultural resources, none were identified in the vicinity. And in terms of the natural resources element, again, the construction is taking place primarily in the existing gravel roads. Erosion control and revegetation will be required. And again, there's those concerns with impacts to habitat for the Prebles Meadow Jumping Mouse, the endangered species. In terms of goals, here are some specific goals. Goal E2 is a functional balance between community facilities and potential land capabilities. Population should be maintained. And goal E6, adequate facilities and services to assure the health, safety, and welfare of all citizens should be promoted. So as we're going to condition our recommendation, there's no conflicts identified with any, with these goals or any other goals related to, you know, natural or cultural resources or to supporting the transportation system. And obviously, we feel that this project does align with these goals to maintain, you know, quality services to the population. So in terms of the staff recommendation, I will not read all the conditions there in the staff report, but we do recommend that the planning commission conditionally approve this docket, LE-20-2 Longs Peak Water District Pipeline, and then subject to these conditions. I did also include kind of a draft condition at the end if the, if the planning commission was interested in, in adding that to, to the, the recommendation. So that's what I have. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any, any questions? For Sean?
I have a question. This is Daniel Hilton. So for that last item, 19, this is related to the Prebles Jumping Mouse. These two crossings, ditch crossings, that's, those are not the only points that are overlapped with our Prebles Jumping Mouse boundary polygons. Is that correct?
Actually, the, the, the identified habitat is just really a buffer around those water resources, and I can flip back to that map. So you can see, actually, here's the, the Highland Ditch Crossing, and here's the Rough and Ready Ditch Crossing. And you can see there's only just these two areas of habitat that are really, you know, just related to those water features. So the comments from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service said, hey, your, your idea of boring under the, the ditch is great. We just need some more information about kind of the staging areas and the excavation areas where you're going to do that. So that was the, the intent of that final recommendation there.
Okay. So there's no habitat outside of those ditch definitions that they, that you had defined in that condition?
Um, I guess we could, you know, make it a little more specific, but the idea was that these were the two areas that we needed to focus on. But we could say within the areas identified as habitat or, or something to that end.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay. Hearing none. We'll ask the applicant if he would like to speak at this point. Gary Allen?
Hello, this is Gary with Longs Peak Water District. Our engineer is here with us, and he is, he didn't realize this, or neither one of us realized the meeting was going to go this long. So Nick Marcott with Element Engineering is still on the line here for just a little bit, so I will let him address or, or make some comments first before he needs to leave, if that's all right?
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. This is Nick with Element Engineering. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate the, the review and the work that Sean's done on the project. He's done a good job and for, you know, and we understand the conditional, the conditions that are required if, you know, if, if this is approved based on the staff recommendation and acknowledge that those need to be taken care of. And, you know, those are all, all included in our project, and we will address the, the requirement that came in yesterday as well. So I don't have a lot to add other than we appreciate the, the time and review, and it's an important project for the district, so we're looking forward to getting started on it.
Thank you. Gary, is there anything else that you would like to add to that?
You know, I, I don't think so, other than the fact that, so, you know, Longs Peak Water District, we, we've been around since 1960 treating water. We serve water to about 1,300 customers between Boulder and Weld County. We were an original participant in Northern Southern Water Supply Project 2. There was an eastern leg that was going to be supported by Longs Peak, Little Thompson Water District, and the town of Frederick. And over the years, the planning of the Southern Water Supply Project 2, Little Thompson and Frederick dropped out of the eastern leg. That left us with two miles all on our own. So we are currently getting water from the Southern Water Supply Project 1, but it is a limited capacity. It's a lease with another entity to the east. This will be our own capacity, and so we won't be needing the, the lease anymore with, with Fort Lupton.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Okay. I'm not hearing anybody with questions, so is there discussion?
This is, we have public comment, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Do we have anyone who has signed up for members of the public to testify? We, we didn't have anything as of before the meeting, so. I don't think there is anyone. Is, let me ask staff, has anyone else signed up?
This is Anna Milner, staff. I'm not aware of anyone else signing up.
Okay. And let me ask, is there anyone who hasn't signed up who would like to testify, member of the public? Okay. Not hearing anyone. Now we can move to discussion. Any comments?
This is, this is Commissioner McMillan. I'm in support of the application. I think that the only, the only question before is if we want to add that additional condition about the Fish and Wildlife Service. That's the only question I have, and I'm in favor of, of adding it. But otherwise, I support the, the application, and best of luck for the applicant. Commissioner Bloomfield, I agree.
Anyone else?
This Commissioner Hilton seems straightforward, and all the conditions seem appropriate, so I am inclined to support it. I would like to see the language again for the, that additional condition related to fish and wildlife.
And I can share my screen again whenever you'd like me to.
Yeah, if you could do that now, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, can, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Fitch? I would move the planning commission approve docket LE-20-0002 Longs Peak Water District Pipeline Replacement with the conditions including the Fish and Wildlife Number 19 as presented by staff.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Dan Hilton.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. Commissioner Bloomfield?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitch?
Aye.
Commissioner McMillan? Commissioner McMillan?
Yeah. New button got me. Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Quigley?
Aye.
And Commissioner Goldfarb? Aye. So motion passes unanimously. Thank you to staff, Sean, and thank you to the applicant, Gary. We appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goldfarb?
This is Kim Sanchez. If I could just-
And Commissioner Goldfarb, this is Kim Sanchez. If I could just interrupt for a quick second. I just wanted to point out that today is Sean's last hearing in front of you. So I've got good news and bad news. The, the good news is that he is staying, the, well, let me start with bad news.
The bad news is, is that he's leaving the development review team. The good news is, is that he's moving to our GIS team and the same, and community planning and permitting. So we'll still retain him as a valued partner on staff. He'll just be in a different capacity. And he's done a really excellent job as a planner, so I just want to commend him for his professionalism and work and efforts in front of you.
Thank you. Absolutely. We're lucky to still have him then. That's great.
Good luck, Sean.
Congratulations, Sean.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else that we need to take up at this time?
I have one last thing. This is Dan Hilton. I think you missed me on the last roll call, but I'm.
Sorry, sorry.
No problem.
Your aye, so we are, we are unanimous still. I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, no problem.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, hearing nothing. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
See you all next time.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.